All right, awesome. Six o'clock, let's get started. All right, welcome. Today is February 7th, 2022, and it is now 6:00 PM. My name is John Lake, supervisor with Rhode Island DPM Division of Marine Fisheries. I'm here tonight to officiate this hearing regarding proposed amendments to Rhode Island fishery regulations on behalf of acting DPM Director Terry Gray. Tonight's hearing concerns proposed amendments to the following division regulations. Part three concerning proposed amended regulations for management of recreational black sea bass, recreational scup, recreational commercial striped bass, general category, and floating fish traps, recreational summer flounder, recreational and commercial totahs. Part 12, the research pilot aggregate program. Part 19, aggregate program for summer flounder and black sea bass. This is a proposed adoption of a new rule. And part 14, the summer flounder exemption certificate program. These proposed amendments were publicly noticed on January 26th, 2022, pursuant to the procedural requirements of Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 42-35 Administrative Procedures, and the Office of the Rhode Island Secretary of State and under the authority of Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 42, 17.1. The purpose of this hearing is to afford interesting parties an opportunity to provide oral testimony, data, opinions, and/or arguments concerning the proposed rulemaking. Please be advised that this hearing is being recorded and will be made available on the division's webpage tomorrow. For tonight's hearing, the following process will be observed. The division will provide a PowerPoint presentation summarizing each of the main proposals. Persons wishing to speak must raise their hand and be recognized by the hearing officer prior to speaking. Speakers must first state their name and/or affiliation for the record. This hearing is not a forum for discussing, debating, arguing, or otherwise having any other dialogue. Any questions must be limited to clarifying questions only. A second comment may be made only after all the other speakers in the room or virtually have had an opportunity to speak first. Once oral comments are complete, the hearing will conclude. Written comments are strongly encouraged and may be submitted until the end of the day on February 25th, which is the end of the notice period. Division staff are available to answer any questions regarding any of these proposals. The record of this public hearing and comments will be provided to the Rhode Island Marine Fisheries Council for consideration at their meeting on March 7th, at which time the council will provide a recommendation to the director on each item. After the comment period has closed, the council meeting, after the comment period has closed and the council meeting has taken place, the director will render his final decisions. The director has the option to file the rules and regulations with the Secretary of State as noticed, file the rules and regulations with minor changes, or not file the rule and consider re-noticing with or without additional amendments. If filed, these rules and regulations become effective 20 days after filing and have the effect of law. So without further ado, let's go to the slides. So just once again, a little refresh on how to participate here. We are both in person and virtual. Please keep your background noise to a minimum. All of, and all the virtual participants are muted throughout the meeting. And I'll tell you, they're getting their audio from that camera right there, and it's very sensitive. It can pick up sidebar conversations, so just be aware of that. After each topic is presented, questions and comments will be taken from in-person participants first. Then we will go to the virtual participants, who we will ask you to raise a hand, which is a feature in the webinar. You will find it down in the reactions button down below. One thing, we are not going to be monitoring chat for this meeting, so feel free to chat, but we are not going to be monitoring. Once it comes to virtual, the meeting facilitator will unmute one participant at a time to make their comment or ask a question. The participant will be, after you're done, he'll be rebooted. Once again, at home, please minimize background noise while you're un-muted. Thank you. And then just another, just circle back. Please state your name each time you're going to make a comment. We're going to have a lot of oral comments here, and that will make our jobs a lot easier and make sure your comment is reported correctly. So the slides shown tonight represent a summary of the proposed rules. And again, this hearing is not a format for discussing the intent, details, or details of the proposed rules. Comments made should be concise and limited to supporting a proposed rule with rationale if desired or not supporting the rule and provided the rationale also. Staff, once again, is available to discuss the proposed rules. If you want to do it after this, to really have a clear and concise comment, reach out to us. We're happy to talk to you. And then once again, I know there are some kind of contentious issues here tonight. Please keep it civil and respect everyone here in the room. All right, so the first item up for comment is recreational black sea bass management for 2022. We have three proposals to comment on. Proposal one is an industry proposal, which amends the minimum size to 16 inches. It starts the season on June 2nd at two fish per day, and it changes the bag limit to three fish per day on September 1st, and ends the season on November 30. The second proposal is also an industry proposal, very similar to the first one. The difference here is it splits off the party charter mode and changes their season to July 1st to December 31st to six fish a day. Once again, a 16-inch minimum size. The third proposal is the division proposal. That proposal starts the season at June 21st at two fish per day, and then increases the bag limit on September 1st to three fish a day. Again, minimum size, 16 inches. I'll open the floor to comments.
Greg, John? My name is Greg Vespe. I represent Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers and our 22 other affiliate clubs, and we would like to support proposal one. And our justification is that the current system has not allowed for access to the fishery from our surf fishermen, our kayak fishermen, our small boat fishermen, and our bay fishermen. And we would like to see a more equitable distribution of access to the fish. We also think that would support tackle shops better because families and people in June would be out fishing and buying tackle, and sea bass are easily caught, and it would provide business as opposed to late season, which we don't, a lot of tackle shops are closed by December. So we support proposal one. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Rich Falcone, member of RISA and AI, and I am in support of Rich Vespe's comments that take us just now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Me? Yes. Richard Chitowski, owner and operator of Fishing Vessel Drifter. I also support our charter boats and party boats in our local area. I am in favor of proposal number two and oppose the other two proposals. It's a big part of our industry in the fall. We've taken a hit on a bunch of other fish that we have, well, you know, a lot of us have been regulated to death in this industry and don't think that we can really afford to have the sea bass taken from us as we built that industry and our businesses for the last, I've, last eight years of doing this really pushed it, and it's been very successful for us. So I am in favor of proposal number two. Thank you.
My name's Rich Hittinger. I'm the first vice president of Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers. I'm in support of proposal number one, as Greg said, to give better access to bay fishermen, et cetera. Proposal number two doesn't seem to be that much different, except that it splits out the party charter. Not particularly opposed to proposal number two. I generally prefer keeping recreational altogether, but I mean, if it helps industry, I'd be interested to hear what other charter boats have to say about proposal two. Sir, in the front.
Oh, man, excuse me, but I guess I'm getting bigger and tired of the time. Danny Dillon, I run the charter boat persuaded too, out of Galilee. I propose proposal number two. Let's the best one for my business. We're already, as Rich Chitowski said, we've taken some pretty big hits in our industry with the various restrictions. So I'm in complete support of proposal number two, mainly because it's a primary part of our, of my business, particularly in the fall of the year. We switch from strippers and we add the sea bass also, so we can get a shot at two. We would like to be able to keep that. I would like to be able to keep that.
Thank you. Yes.
Matt Cox, I run the owner-operator Laura Ann, and more recently of Stella C. I am with Danny and Rich, supporting proposal two. It's the best of both. The private guys get their fish in June. The party charter, we get our fall season. That's my full support.
In the back.
Coach, I'm a kayak fisherman and recent member, came in here. I support proposal one, but I've got a question for you. From what I understand, we need to take a 28% reduction in recreational catch due to overcatch in previous years. That's what this is about. And even though proposal one and proposal two look relatively similar, it seems to me, had a ranger report before coming here, it said proposal one will achieve a 28% reduction. Proposal two looks like it would probably take more fish out of the water than proposal one. Would that achieve the 28% reduction? So that's a question to you.
So to clarify, we do not know whether it will be approved by ASMEC, who are driving the coastwide management here. They are having a meeting, my understanding is, this week to discuss such matters. So they will give us a tool then to evaluate the reduction. Thanks. Yes.
I'm Phil Duckett, a member of RISA, as well as Quidditch Island Striper team, and I support proposal number one. And I'm concerned about proposal number two in that six fish a day for half of the season from the beginning of July all the way through to December on a charter party boat that's got upwards of 50 fishermen, could take a lot of fish out of the, out of those.
Thank you. In the back.
Peter Jenkins, on the Saltwater Edge, Chief for Rhode Island. Support proposal one. Certainly, the January to June is the time for the shore-based angler. There's certainly some of the data I've looked at, more than half of the folks who fish around fish from the shore. So it's an important, you know, audience. The other thing would be, if either of these proposals, one and two, achieved the 18% that Carl spoke to, that would make both of two more interesting.
Thank you. Yes.
Dave Dubey, recreational fisherman, RISA member. I support proposal number one. I think it makes more sense for the recreational fishermen, especially from shore and kayak.
Thank you.
We're both RISA members and also kayakers, so we don't go to the desk, but we want to support, recommend proposal one.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the gentleman in the red chair.
Charlie Riley, member of RISA and Quidditch Island Striper team. I support proposal number one as well, just given the earlier access to it. And then also I question the number of fish that will be taken from that long season, six fish, you know, for that.
Thank you. I'm going to go with you.
Craig Ruth, I'm the chairman of the kayak committee for Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers Association. And I also like proposal number one. And for the same reasons that Greg Vespe mentioned, that it opens the window up for the kayak fishermen earlier in the season. And a lot of times we don't stay out until the end of December anyway, so it's just more a better option for the kayak anglers.
Thank you. In the back.
I operate a fishing machine charter. It's like, so I support proposal number two. As some of my other charter boat captains said, without that extension in the season, it's still not what I do to support my family. Without the sea bass, I'm going to lose that portion of my season. It's not going to help me maintain my trips towards the end of the season. So I support proposal number two.
Thank you. He's there.
Tom Malone, a recent member. Just a couple of comments. The fishery is absolutely fantastic. And I mean, we enjoy it here in Rhode Island. The fish are bigger than they've ever been. There's more of them. Our neighboring states have seasons that start early in May, I think, in Connecticut, as well as Mass. And it just seems reasonable that everybody should be able to participate in the fishery, whether it's from shore, small boat, offshore. We should all recreationally have the same opportunity. For that reason, I support proposal one.
In the back.
Yes, Joel Hill.
Yeah, thank you. Frank Love, owner of Francis Fleet. I'm an, also a RISA member. And I understand the concern to the opening earlier, so I do support option number two because I do agree that the guys in the bay got something to add over the years. And I know the hands have been tied because we haven't had status quo regulations. That wasn't a state decision. We hear a lot of talk about access to the fishery, and that is very important. One thing to keep in mind during the last few years with sea bass, that the, if you take a five-year average and then do the last three years to see if there's been an increase or decrease in the fisheries, the private and shore-based fishermen has had about a 15% increase in the landings at sea bass. If you look at the four higher, did the same thing with a five-year average, then take the three years, see what the last three years have done. There's been about a 10% decrease. I'd be very, one of, part of the reason for that is, I mentioned the earlier opening, in Massachusetts, Connecticut has separate regulations for the four higher fleet. And they have, you know, a different bag limit than the rest. I would be hypocritical, if anybody knows me, for the last 30 years being in fisheries management. I've always said that I think four higher data, especially after headboats, is probably a little low. But the fact is that it is very important, fishery grows. I do support two, but I also, I've been talking to the division, and something that has been done in other fisheries, especially on the tender one, is to have a letter of authorization for either an experimental fishery. And to do that, you would have to, similarly, we have the food aggregate program and things like that. So if you wanted to participate in that program, a couple of things that would be done to have the letter, you must apply to the letter of authorization prior to the opening of the sea bass fishing. The opening day. The letter must be carried aboard the vessel. Vessels may only fish for sea bass during the open periods for the party charter boat season. There will be 100% mandatory reporting regardless of where you're fishing. Vessels must have a current Rhode Island four higher permit, and any violation of any condition of the letter voids the certificates and your own. So with that, I support option number two for that.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in the audience before I go to the folks at home? Or in the right?
Shear Sarek, one of the owners after the eight.
Thank you. In the back.
Oh, we got me. We know for everybody.
Can you say your last name again? Thank you. Please, sir.
JCSO generations charters. I support proposal number two. I think it gives you what the recent guys want. Better access to fishery, opened stuff earlier, with the same bag on this, with the same flag, just here in the charter boats, changing the whole shirt. So the guys don't lose out of the business. Seems like we're going both ways.
Thank you. All right, why don't we go to, in the front. I support proposal number two.
Hey, there's over 100 people on the Zoom, so I'm just going in order of the hands that I see on the list. So when I call your name, I will ask you to unmute. First, we have James Manzo.
Hi, yes, James Manzo, RISA member and out-of-state angler. I come up from New Jersey two or three times a year, and I am in support of proposal one. I mean, to get out to Rhode Island sooner in the summertime and enjoy that awesome fishery. I think it'll bring, you know, it'll have more incentive for people to come to the state and get in on that sea bass. So I am in full support of proposal number one. Thank you.
Next, we have Rick Bellvins.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Rick Bellvins, Priority Fishing charters in Point Judith, Rhode Island. Also the president of the Rhode Island Party and Charter Boat Association. I am, well, we met by webinar to discuss the different proposals for black sea bass. Our membership did. We've also had many emails back and forth, plenty of phone calls and texts and so on. And our association is in strong support of proposal two. We helped to develop this proposal. We worked really hard to try to appreciate the asks of the private recreational and shore-based community and develop something that would work for as many people in Rhode Island as we possibly can. Proposal two, we believe does that. It affords the ability for the party and charter boat industry to maintain their fall fishery, which has become a vital component of our business model these days, while also allowing the private and shore-based anglers the spring access that they've desired for quite some time. We feel like this is a good compromise and a way for the state to get the most they can out of a difficult black sea bass management season. So again, we support industry proposal two. Thank you.
And next we have Steve Gordon.
Hello. I am a recreational fisherman and I would support proposal one. That's, that's all the time I want to take. I know a lot of people want to speak. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Next, we have Don Wood.
Hi, thank you. I'm a recreational angler, and I'm also with Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers Association, and I'm the president of the Board of Directors. We met as a group as well and came up with proposal one for our members, basically for the shore anglers, the surf fishermen, the kayakers, the bay fishermen, and the small boat anglers. So our organization would love proposal one. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Robert, I'm going to mispronounce your last name, Jacob, Jacob.
Thank you. I'm a recreational fisherman. I'm also a RISA member. And I support proposal one because I think it opens up the fishery more to shore and kayak fishermen, and it allows everybody more of an equal chance, I think. So I'm strongly in support of proposition, proposal one. Thank you.
Next, we have, it just says Dave's iPhone.
Yeah, that's probably me. Hi, this is Dave Grazulli, recreational fisherman, recent member, also private boat owner. Honestly, I don't support any of the proposals, and the reason for that is, is the 16-inch increase. I keep hearing discussion about opening and access to shore anglers, but we increased the size of the fish from the shore angler. I think if we're interested in opening early, provide shore angler ability to get into a larger fish, I think we should keep it at 15 inches. And obviously, the bag limit is not what they are, but that's all. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Eric Jacob.
Hello. My name is Eric Jacob. I'm with RISA. And I support proposal one because it opens the fishery up to more shore and kayak fishermen, and it allows them for more equal chance to target their species. Thank you.
Thanks.
Richard Wright.
I'm still muted. Okay, thank you. I'm a RISA Board of Directors member, Narragansett Surf Casters member, and I own a small tackle company, Ganser Custom Tackle. And I'm in favor of proposal number one to extend the season on sea bass.
Thanks.
Paul Phillips.
Hi, I'm a recreational angler. I am also a RISA member. I would support proposal number one. The earlier season's a great thing, and also I think all recreational fishermen, be it charter, party, shore, private boat, should all have the same seasons and bag limits. Thank you.
Thanks.
Freddie Metz.
Hi, I'm a recreational angler, and I support proposal number one. I feel like we need to preserve the stock, and that does a good way of doing it. I fish from shore, and I also shop at the tackle shops, like Peter Jenkins shop, that fuels his business as well. I'm also a RISA member. Thank you.
Thanks.
Michael Hagan.
Did you hear me?
We got you. We can hear you.
This is Michael Hagan. I support proposal number one. I'm affiliated with RISA.
Thank you.
Island Current Fleet.
My name is Captain Chris Cullen from the Island Current Fleet over at Snug Harbor. I'm in proposal of number two, as it best meets the needs of both the recreational and the party charter community. The black sea bass is a very robust fishery, high in stock, and easily attainable for both recreational and party boat anglers. It is the best option, and I'm in favor of proposal number two.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tom Corrie.
How you doing? I'm also a RISA member. I'm a recreational fisherman. I support proposition number, proposal number one. But I think we should keep it at 15 inches because that way we're all in equivalent to the other states around us, Connecticut, Massachusetts. If we all stay the same with the same dates and also size limits, I think that would, that would be best. Also, if you think, as they migrate into the shoreline from the ocean in the springtime, if they go to the left or the right, they'll be quarter 15. If they go into the center, they'll be going around and caught at 16. I think everything should be equivalent. Connecticut, Massachusetts, Rhode Island. So I support proposal number one, keeping it at 15.
Thank you.
Tom H.
Good evening. Tom Hood here. I'm a RISA member. I'm also a member of their kayak committee. I support proposal one for the reasons that Greg Vespe introduced earlier in the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on my list, I have a Brian Bacon, but you don't have any audio on, so I can't give you any way to make a comment. If you join audio, we'll come back to you later on. So I'm going to skip ahead to Carol Mello.
Mute. Okay, I'm unmuted now. Hi. Hi, I'm a RISA member, and my husband also. We do a lot of recreational fishing, and we do support proposal number one, mainly because, you know, other states are already fishing, and we don't get to fish early enough. So most definitely, that and the earlier season is definitely a plus. Thank you.
So most definitely that and the earlier season is definitely a plus. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Roger Tellier.
I'm a recreational fisherman and I support proposal number one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have David Neal.
It's, it's my Ellie. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I am a recreational angler and a private boat owner and a member of RISA. And I support proposal number one. With respect to proposal number two, I have no issue with the extended season for charter boats. But my issue is the bag limit of six fish per day, which just doesn't seem equitable when compared to private boat owners. And also, if we're trying to achieve the reduction in the, in the of 28%, it seems to me six fish per person per day on a charter boat is excessive. That's all my comments.
Thanks.
Tom Lemire.
Yes, my name is Tom Lemire. I'm a recreational fisherman out of Newport. Also a private boat owner. I support proposal number one. And I really like the lower bag limits. I think that helps the fishery quite a bit.
Thank you.
Bob M.
Yes, Bob Murray, I support proposal number one. I think it's more equitable for those people in Rhode Island who actually purchase a fishing license. And I think that both for hire and the recreational should both see the same limits. Thank you.
Peter Obeso.
Yeah, hi. I'm a recreational fisherman, a member of the RISA Board of Directors and a private boat owners. And I like to support reason number one. And I also support the comment Bob Murray just made. Well, everybody fishing Rhode Island residents purchased the license. Most of the people on party and charter boats are fishing for free. They should be catching three fish and going home. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have David Cunningham.
Yeah, hi, I am also a fisherman. I am not particularly a black sea bass angler. So I am proposing, I would support proposal number one. I would say that I was shocked by the number of out of state party and charter boats that I saw out in front of Newport this year. And if there was a way to propose number two, to limit it to Rhode Island registered charter boats, I'd go for it. But otherwise, I would be opposed.
Thanks.
Roman.
Hi, my name is Roman Dudas and I'm a recreational angler. And I would choose proposal one for the conservation factor. Thank you.
Thanks.
Fred Definis.
Yes, I am Fred Definis. I'm a recreational angler, RISA member and boat owner. Like to support proposal number one. Because I've seen for many years the discrepancy between our neighboring states and ours. You can't compare the fisheries. And I think the Rhode Island angler deserves to have that same opportunity that the anglers do in our neighboring states. Thank you.
Thanks.
Eric Thomas.
I am a charter captain out of Newport. I have been a charter captain for over 20 years. I support proposal number one. I got to be honest, cleaning a 15 inch fish to get a chicken nugget sized filet is shameful for me anyways. So I support proposal number one with an increased minimum size. And I think the bag limits are reasonable as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bill Sakalowski.
Hi, I'm a recreational angler, member of RISA, private boat owner. I support proposal number one. And to be frank with you, we don't keep anything on my boat unless it's 18 inches or above, going along with the small filets. Thank you.
Thanks.
So Brian Bacon, you still have your hand raised, but again, you don't have audio. So if you'd like to make a comment, I would suggest you submit one in writing. Those are all the raised hands I see.
All right, we'll see if anyone.
Carol Mellow.
I just also wanted to reiterate the fact of the six fishing day on the charter party boats, I think, is excessive. I think that three fish and everybody should be on even keel. Everyone should be catching the same amount of fish. We're all out there doing the same kind of thing. Thank you.
Thanks.
And Lawrence Quatino.
Yes, hi, Lawrence Quatino. I'm also a recreational fisherman, member of RISA, RISA. And I support proposal one. I think a lot of us in the, in the spring of fishing in Massachusetts, and if you catch a sea bass and you're going to come back to Rhode Island, you can't keep it. If you landed in Massachusetts, you can. And I think that the two states, which really share almost common water, should have the same regulations. Thank you.
Thanks.
Would anyone else on the Zoom like to make a comment? Last call for black sea bass.
All right, let's go back to the audience, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Dennis Ambera, recreational shore angler from Newport, Rhode Island. I have one suggestion. Marine Fisheries, Rhode Island Marine Fisheries Council has done a really good job of making special exemptions for shore angling in certain sites. I think the black sea bass could be a fish that we could also do that with also. We do it right now with stuff in summer flounder. We allow a smaller fish. There's nothing that will increase the likelihood that you can take a fish home than opening the size limit for shore. I know it's been 15, it's 15 in all the other states. If, if the division can crunch the numbers and it's acceptable, I'd really like to see proposal one or two, but with a exemption or an addition for the shore management, shore angling sites, that for shore, limited to 15 inches.
Thank you. I'm going to go in the back there.
Captain Dan Smith, Alton Gammel charters, in favor of proposal two.
Back to them. John, just can you clarify that the other states are also taking a 28% cut? So a lot of people are referencing the 15 inch for other states. But the reality is every state around here is going through the same process, correct?
That's correct. It is a coastline reduction.
Okay, I think that might.
All right, it looks like we got two more on. Sorry, we got a few more here. We'll go, sorry, in that.
So again, Matt Cox. I do support proposal two. However, you know, here in a lot of the, some of the charter party fleet is a little bit splits. The guys that fish in the bay want fish in June. For myself and many of the other guys that fish Pointe, do it, go south. We don't have a June fishery for them. They do nothing for us. Fortunately, it's not a hobby. It's a livelihood. We need the fall fishery. That's when we make our, you know, that's when we fish. We just don't, don't fish sea bass in June. It's not, not doable, not something we ever have. People have said, you know, they keep saying that we get our season extended. It's not true. It's just shuffled over. Now Frank Lount suggested something that really caught my attention. He's suggesting, you know, that party charter split be somewhat optional, somewhat you sign up for. And if you choose that, then that's, that's where you fall. Now you have to apply for whatever you would have, if you were a party charter boat. If you wanted to fish June, we need not apply. I'm willing to explore that some more.
Thanks, Rich.
Yes, we're giving up as charter, we are giving up the full month of fishery, which allows those fish and a different way to, for us to let them go by. So the recreational shore fishing community has an option to do that or not to do that. I just, I'm just want to understand when listening to all the, and I don't want to say opposition, because I didn't hear any real opposition. But I heard a lot of people in the, in the recreational community are interested in that proposal number one. Does that mean by saying that you are totally against the charter boat industry in the state? We're a very small part of the group that is targeting these fish. Later in the fall, like again, which has been said, we depend on them for our livelihoods. I've been in this for, I'm second generation. I've been in this a very, very long time. I personally, I can't see where there should be any discrepancy between any user groups with the amount of fish that are in this ocean. I just don't understand why anybody or any group would want to be against the other when, when this, this is an open fishery for, for everybody in this state to enjoy, which is, again, it's more plentiful than it's ever, ever been. I don't see any problem with anybody catching these, whether it's shore or for, you know, kayak or however you guys like to do it. I mean, nobody's against any of that. I just know that I need this fisheries for my livelihood. I need this fishery for, you know, this is, I'm all in. I'm a full-time guy. I did not do anything else. I came into this again as a second generation fisherman that worked very hard to get in the position that I'm in. And it would be a tragedy for us to lose. I feel it's, it's just our, it's much our right as everybody else's. But again, to reiterate, everybody, I just want everybody to think about, there's no issue with sea bass. There's no issue. We don't have an issue with sea bass. So why don't we just all work together? The commercial guys get what they get. The recreational people are happy. I love to see guys out there doing that. I love them. I'm glad you got kayaks, little boats. If you like to shore fish, that's all wonderful. But I'm in it in a little different, you know, my, my perspective and my position is a little bit different. And, and I think that I deserve, and we deserve, not I, but in the industry, we deserve to continue what we've been doing, just so we can survive. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Rich, do you mind stating your full name just for the record?
Richard Chakowski, fishing vessel drifter again. Thanks.
In the back.
Dean, this is not a favorite special, yeah. I just would support what Rich had to say, everything he had to say about his background in the fishery, his knowledge of it. And he's 100% active. And I hope things go away, then he's trying to help us.
Thanks.
Patrick Duncan, professional fisherman, I'm on board with Rich. You know, a skin and even keel for everybody. We're all just trying to text fishing at the time. A lot of peoples, a lot of people have, some people don't have much invested. Some people have their whole life invested in that. Number two is going to save some people. Number one, we'll put some more people out on the streets.
Thanks.
Rich. Rich Kittinger, Rhode Island Saltwater anglers. I'll just say the reason when I made my first comment, that I said I support proposal one. And I said, I'm not opposed to proposal two. The reason is because of the abundance of black sea bass. I think the reason some recreational fishermen are opposed to proposal two is because of a question of fairness. That's really the issue. When you look at proposal two, the party and charter season is open actually one or two more days than the general recreational season. And yet, there's catching the same size fish, but allowed six rather than two or three. So I think it's a fairness type thing. If that six was four, it might be perceived as more fair. I don't think the six would hurt the population of black sea bass. I think we could, we could all take six. That's what I think. But, but, you know, we're being forced by the feds to get this 28% reduction. And, and so I just feel like the reason some people are opposed is a fairness question.
Thank you, Rich. Does that?
Richard Chakowski and Matt are saying, spot on. Those guys, they take their votes a lot further than most private boat owners do. And it's time to hear our most private boat owners coming out of the world. The shift, this is a no-brainer. Those guys, it's their livelihood. I'm just saying, somebody in front of us, the person's in Rhode Island, recreational, because they're getting on the charter boat. You're right, they're not spending $7 on a license. They're spending $125 or $90 on a ticket. You know, that supports that. And that is the same, same Cornell University, great. Every dollar they generates, three to the local economy, no different than the rest of us in the industry. So really, this should be a no-brainer. You guys should be able to go and do it. They need it. I've seen Matt out fishing right next to me. That's the only one around, aside from Dick. So, I mean, all these guys that are recreational, have boats, have lessons, whatever they want to do. Once the weather turns and we see half a labor day, the number's really good. And the reality is, this is federal guideline. You tell me this problem, sea bass, I'm going to laugh way too much. I know Dan will, I have his own form of proof. So, Charles.
Thank you. Go to Frank and then.
All right, yeah, thank you. Keep in mind, going to 16 inches, I think is approximately a 11% reduction. I don't know if that's across all modes, but that's what's been used coastward. Going down to the six fish in the fall season is also, we don't have that. I'm going to trigger this right now. Losing the week in June for my business is huge, because that's about the time that school gets out. And that's more half-day fishing. And Connecticut also has, well, they have in the past, so it's hard to say what they'll do this year. But in the past, they've been open. So when we open for sea bass, that's when we'll start caring. So losing that week, we will have a big reduction. I do question also, and I like to think I'm fair and honest. I questioned the six fish during July. I'm not sure if that was the industry proposal. That's something that eats the beetles out.
Thanks. Do you want to say your name? Frank Block, first. And in the back.
Captain George. Just wanted to leave a point on the proposal number one, which I have four. Mainly because of the difference of the six fish limit for the party charter boat. When I first started this, it was in '95. There were maybe five of us out there. There was no people. Now it looks like a sea up there in the sun. You know, if you don't, if you don't think there's a problem, it's going to be a problem. You've got all these bigger boats from Newport, they think it's the promised land. You've got all these bigger boats from the new boats, they think is the promised land. You know, it, it's too much. And uh we've got to, we shouldn't be only take six. I mean, if we have a small boat. Four or six basses. It's crazy. We're throwing fish back so they can catch more. Not a good idea for us. Not a good idea for any recreational fish to keep this sustainable fish.
Thank you. In the back, I won't say, uh, it's starting to get a little circular here. We do have a very heavy agenda. So if it's a, a new, a new aspect, please feel free to comment. Otherwise, uh, I think we've uh sorted out where the people lie. All right, we got two on Zoom.
Uh, Katie Egan. We're unmuted and then you muted again. Oh, I apologize. I did not mean to do that. Thank you.
We can, we can hear you.
Uh, Dave's iPhone.
Hi, Dave Grazoli again. So I originally didn't support any of the proposals, but I shifted proposal number two. Um, and largely in support of the charter industry in the fall with the six fish. Uh, I think those guys need that industry. The fish are there. And it gives us the same benefit of proposal number one. Thank you.
And Brian Bacon.
All right, can you guys hear me now?
We got.
All right, woo-hoo. Um, yeah, uh, I'm Brian Bacon, owner, operator of Big Game Sport Fishing Charters on Snug Harbor. Um, I'm uh in, in favor of proposal number two. Um, black sea bass, especially in the fall, is a really big part of my business and the rest of the charter boat fleet. Um, you know, and I think, you know, as, as both uh Rich Chakowski and uh Rich uh Hittinger said before, there's more than enough fish for both recreational and charter boat guys um to go out there um and get the fish. I mean, the fishery is healthy. I don't care where you fish, where you drop down, there's black sea bass everywhere. Uh, but um it's pretty much it. We're in favor of proposal number two.
Thank you. All right, so we can move on to our next item of the comment. And that is uh the for SCUP twenty twenty-two recreational measures. Uh, there is a proposal, subdivision proposal for an increase in size from nine to ten inch for the general recreational category and from eight to nine inches at our special shore sites. Any comment on recreational SCUP? John, can you just clarify that that's because we have to take a cut?
This is a fishery management plan uh consideration.
All right, see no comments. We can move on. Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, uh, Frank Laut, straight asleep. Yeah, I'm, I'm a favor of that. One thing I'd like to keep in mind is uh the policy board, I think it's meeting tomorrow. And they're gonna be smoothing some of the data. Um, going through it, I know it's a pretty big mistake for last year. Uh, they're looking at it now. It's wave two in Massachusetts. Last year, there were one point four million stuff caught. It's the first time in twenty years, or actually anywhere through uh Murfreesboro or Emory, that there's ever been anyone in these in Massachusetts in order to do this stuff. So the coast come out of there and hopefully the reduction will keep coastwise uh will be less. A little more as this move over, but that is something. I also support the special shore access sites. I think it's important uh that when people think about, we could have special shore access sites for the shore fishermen. That's really not any different than what we were asking for in sea bass fishery for the four hundred. It's just low power for everybody, but a hundred percent supportive.
Thank you. All right, so moving on. For a striped bass twenty twenty-two commercial management, we have two proposals. Uh, the first is a division proposal, which uh just changes the opening date for commercial striped bass to May eighteenth, I'm sorry, May nineteenth. Uh, it has a sixty percent allocation, five fish bag limit. Second season would begin July first with a forty percent allocation and then again, a five fish bag limit. We have a second proposal, which is an industry proposal, which would begin the season on June first, uh lasting until July fifth. Uh, I think there might be a typo for the bottom part, but uh switch to a fifty-fifty split of the allocations for the two seasons. And then the second season, I'm assuming would have started on July sixth. Uh, once again, both for five fish per day. Any comments on commercial striped bass?
All right, I think for questions, and I'm for proposal number one.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna go with this gentleman.
Uh, Steve Katkowski, commercial fisherman. I have a question on this. Is this still keeping up with uh closed Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yes, those rules would not change. In fact, that's why we moved the division date back a bit.
I would be in support of proposal one.
Thank you. In the back.
Captain Michael O'Neal, proposal one. Sir, Jason Isiolo, proposal one. The further you can stay in Massachusetts, the better, the worse, better for our federal charter fish.
Thank you. In the front.
Mike Monofordi, proposal number one.
Thank you. In the back.
Uh, Captain Tom, uh, commercial fisherman. I'm also in favor of proposal one.
Thank you.
Uh, Kendall, um, Rhode Island Commercial Rail Association. Uh, proposal number two came from us. It's an attempt to try to rebalance what used to work pretty good for everybody. Um, what happened to the early opening, the fish don't, the boats are stationed down in South County area. Don't get shot at the fish till uh June tenth, maybe it, they start to move in around the island. Uh, they were up in the bay earlier. We used to, we used to open on the sixth of June, seventh of June. We jumped back into May. Um, what will happen now, dividing the season in fifty-fifty, the logic behind that is just typically when you look at having two opening dates in, in number one, uh, May nineteenth to June thirtieth, then July one to December thirty-first, we'll close on July fifth or sixth. So there really is no second part of the season. That fish gets caught early because we open early. So the South County fishermen feel that they're not getting a balance on. And that's, that's where that's coming from. It's just to balance it out, the space to shut down July fourth weekend to get away from the recreational problem of water. Give them space and to stop that quarter. The others, the other issue of fifty-fifty versus the sixty-forty. Sixty-forty is really not forty percent of the second period anyway. It typically runs straight through. But even if it did, the first period would go over a little bit and it comes off the second period. So it heavily favors the people who can access the fish earlier in the season. So based on that, we submit proposal two, figures fair and equitable perfectly.
Thank you, Ken. Just making sure no one else, any first commenters? Want to go to the man in red? And the user.
Yeah, in response to the uh industry proposal number two, um, they're saying we're opening it the way we want it sooner because we're in the bay. Um, yeah, we kept a few fish between May fifteenth and May first, I mean, June first. Not enough to change the percentage. We used to have the spring run and it would close because we'd reach our quarter. Now we can no longer reach our quarter. And as Ken said, they need that because they need that little bit of time. Well, the second quarter used to open in September. The market, the, the fish have changed. Then they, they moved it up to the first of September and they said, well, we can't catch them in September, so we need the end of August. So they got the end of August. Now we're looking at July back to back. And when they start catching fish, their fish are thirty and forty, fifty pounds. We can come in with five fish a day and none of them hit the point. So after the weight wise, the few fish that we catch earlier, it's not going to put a dent in the percentage. So let us have, or they can come up, like they said to us, we can go to Black Island, or they can come up to the proper and improve on fish with us in May. And it's only a, a week.
Thank you. If you don't mind, restate your name just for the comment.
Mike McElroy.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, Joe.
Yeah, Joe, apologies. Just one caveat. Um, as far as the proposal one, I see you have the late nineteen because that's Thursday. Why not just go to late twenty-third because it's a Monday? And then we stop the whole cycle for weeks.
Um, I mean, just to clarify, we chose to open it as close as we could in the original plate. But that's a fair comment. Thank you. Thanks. You want on Zoom?
Uh, just a reminder to speak up when you're making your comments and try to keep side conversations to a minimum. We've gotten a few comments that they can hear. People have inside conversations on Zoom.
And we got no one on Zoom. Um, all right, so I think we can move on. So the next proposal is also concerning striped bass commercial uh management. This is to amend the rule regarding allocation transfer from the floating fish trap sector to the general category sector. This rule proposes to make a hard date of September first, where a minimum of fifty percent of the remaining floating fish trap allocation will be transferred to the general category. And uh then the general category fish, fishing sector would be reopened until that amount is estimated to be harvest.
Ken. Uh, Kendall, this proposal came from the Rhode Island Commercial Rail Association. Over the years, the uh we let fish a quarter on the table because it's been unable to be caught. And that's because of how we've managed it. Um, realistically, and I'm not knocking the fishermen, God bless them, but the floating fish trap, this fish trap fishing, they have forty percent of the allocation guaranteed to them. And as it turns out, there's pretty much only three fishermen fishing. So what this does is when those fishermen have done fishing, what's happened in years, their nets have been out of the water. But they still have hold of it, uncaught. And we end up transferring it over after some negotiation is done in September or when it's too late to catch. So what this does is sets a trigger point that it will automatically still hold on anything that's up, fifty percent of what's uncaught. They can still keep fishing. The bottom can manage it, but this allows that quarter to be, to be fished when it's still around. So that's, all of those kind of balance the equation with it.
Thank you. Joe?
It's a shame that, you know, we've got a minimum amount of fishermen. So I mean, a little bit more like those in court, being even happier, they're doing fishing and doing as far as they want to look. And I think this would be great.
Thank you. Thank you. Are you Josiah that?
Josiah Dodge, one of those pescant South County fishermen that was aforementioned. This is a great idea because every year the floating fish trap board gets transferred to the marshal side of the general category. And usually by then, it's too late. So literally it gets transferred, we get three days fishing down our way. That just blows everything out. This that act down a little quicker and a little earlier here. We could use a bicycle once we lose uh fish traps around. So this full support of this.
Thank you. That.
Patrick Duncan, commercial fisherman. I am, I can understand we gotta roll the fish over about September first. Uh, seasons are changing and I would hate to see the fish trap guys who depend down on the fall run of strikers if I'm purely not out. Us roll over a bunch of fish and then they get a lot of fish. Maybe there's some type of communication. Maybe it's a little lower than fifty percent. Maybe September first, they give fifteen percent. And then talk about that later on. I know you guys have done a good job. I know you guys have done it before. I mean, I hate to leave fish on the table. I also hate to shut guys down because I know the guys that fish the full fish trap for the falls, most of the time, that's their main source of bread and income, you know, so. I don't know. It's a tricky uh situation. I don't, I don't want to see a hard date because every year different. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for uh striped bass floating, strip, floating, floating fish trap manager? Moving on, we have another striped bass commercial management proposal. This is an industry proposal to remove the gillnetting prohibition from the commercial striped bass harvest. Uh, just to clarify, this would put the gill net uh gear in the general category as floating fish trap is specific to that gear. And it would allow for, it, it, it includes a rule to uh make it an incidental catch, which would mean that the amount of other fish on board must be equivalent to the amount of striped bass on board as well. But to clarify, it would still be limited to a five fish limit or whatever the bag limit is. Any comments on commercial striped bass, Josiah?
Sorry, Dodge. About time to address. And you have one fishery out of everybody that's just one. Automatically and my fish bank will be set next to all of the striped bass. Generally, the gill net would come dead in the end, so you know the hardest thing to start with.
Thank you. Kevin.
Patrick Duncan, commercial fisherman, gill net fisherman. I support this. It's uh reducing this, it's making a discard landing, discard to eat it, the head scent of all the fisheries. And uh, nothing that's uh is gonna put us on the even playing field. I have a multi-purpose state license because I have a gillnet vessel and I go gillnetting on my boat. I'm not allowed to keep something with the person who has the same license. I'd spend the three hundred and forty dollars a year under my state license. I guess if they don't have a gillnet in Dawson, they spend three twenty, so twenty dollars and uh I'd spend twenty extra dollars and I can't even keep a striker on my boat. If I have a gillnet on it, you catch them. We're, we're gonna catch, they're gonna be caught on that. Might as well take a discard and make a landing out of it. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll, I'll agree with the Pat has to say with that also. It's an incidental catch there. It's dead. And uh, you know, for the most part, I don't think they're really uh what they're fishing for and where they're fishing. I don't think it is really uh a big subject to even really worry about.
Thanks, and if you don't mind just giving your name. Uh, Richard Chakowski. Thank you. Joe.
You know, it's hard to run, you know, commercial fisherman, you're not the favorite of this at all. I don't think it's proper. They can do as it is. You know, do this in general category. You keep that a bit more down. You start off originally, so it's twenty years. General category being just a rod and reel fish. That's the way it works. That's the way it starts. Then you need to drive for a while. Now, we're, we're letting you do the entire pot forward this thing, diminish every year because of fire last uh issues and so forth. And I do not think that you can do all the general category. I mean, you've got your father up fishing right now. Look, he has a high catch, good people. He's a very powerful man. And with the sea bass, thank you, you're up there. But I just don't think it was part of looking, keeping in general, using this category. He just doesn't, he won't pull, he won't seem like he's gonna get it fired, I believe. I don't think it's bad. It won't happen as far as the enforcement. Your idea, I feel supposedly, so it's not leaving a little bit of difference. I mean, that's a lot of stories between. Because I would assume if a gill net has a lot of reel and port, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if it's into it, but I just think it, it's, it's very tough to enforce uh what happens with dead bass catch in the season. No, so many dead. some more forward. I mean, I just don't think it's, I don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
A question, does the equivalent power have to be on the boat for the strike fish to be born?
It would be uh, once the fishing has ceased. So we, the, the weights wouldn't have to add up after you're done fishing.
The bad hundred pounds of ice stuff, it could be a hundred pounds of bass?
As long as it was five fish, or less.
How about the stuff that were there from the day before?
Ken, uh, we're on, we're on the rail. Um, we oppose this change. Again, as uh, the fisherman can mention, it was originally a rod and real fisher. And when you look at the state quotas that were given to that Massachusetts Rhode Island foundation, those came from rod and real for fish. And now it's being divided up among other sectors. So the quota doesn't necessarily say belong, but it was earned by the rod and real community. The problem now is the, the uh, latent effort that's gonna come off the dock and chase this. The equivalency, you know, to say have it on boat, I the point of stuff, I keep three totes of stuff on the boat, ice down before eighties to to clean my hand fish, just unenforceable. It doesn't make sense to impact this kind of fishery. And we're already struggling now to try to get some seasons out of it. It doesn't seem right.
Yes. So is he, Josiah, just gonna vote?
Yeah, I, I agree with uh, this guy. I don't, I don't support it. Most of the people I talked to today don't support it. The quotas keep going down and down and down and down.
Thanks. Do you mind just saying your name for the comment? Thank you. Uh, go to Rick.
John, um, while we generally are supportive of trying to reduce discards, the saltwater anglers would certainly be concerned about an increased proliferation of gill net gear on some of the striper pumps and spots, even though I understand it would be an inadvertent catch. Uh, we would be really leery of increasing the ability of the desire ability of putting gill nets for a striper.
Thanks, and if we could just have your name again, please.
Frank Dusman, thanks.
In the back?
Uh, Jan Smith, Old Lake Dam charters. I, I would like to be in favor of not wasting a fish. Uh, so I would give the gill netter the buy catch. No question. It's already dead when it comes up in the net. I worked on a gill netter one time. Wasn't for me. And it was primarily because of what I saw go back over and red that. I deliberately don't harbor strippers on my boat because I don't want to see an overslot fish go back there. So if it's already dead, let's turn it into something instead of wasting it.
Thank you. Rich?
Uh, Rich Kittinger, recreational angler. I, my question is whether this uh, is approvable through ASMFC. Uh, it, I don't know that there are any other states that allow gill net uh, catch for uh, commercial strike bass.
There, there are, there are other states, I should just clarify, it would be less.
It, it's pretty unusual. Anyway, I, I would be very leery about this. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with uh, you know, a true buy catch. Uh, but if it's, if it turns out to be profitable, it will be a targeted. You know, it'll be targeted in some way. So that would be my fear.
Thank you. Any other first commenters?
Josiah, Josiah Dodge, as more than one person is supporting that probably acknowledge, if you wanna go by history and heated fish, my father is probably responsible for a massive amount of that quota. Seeing them block out of residence in sixteen sixty one. Strike bass, I mean, if you're gonna go by that standard, then I guess the rod and real sector doesn't include. True that, so everybody who can drag one, they're twenty five cents a pound in the seventies. If you're gonna go by historical standards, not what applies today, a dead fish, a dead fish, a dead fish. If you take a discard and turn it into a landing, there shouldn't be an issue with that. The fish is already dead, it's being removed from the bottom hatch, no matter what. And as far as having a lot of reel on the boat, gill netting, no, actually, the way the regulation reads clearly says that if you are a gill netted dead, it is illegal to be possession of any strike bass. Any. So now technically you can even take it out of your nets and you reset it and catch track. And other species that you really don't want in the gill nets. Because you can't be in possession of it. Once it comes out of the net, you have to be in possession of it. Until you discard it, but it's still all that dead. This is gonna end waste. I, I don't even know how many gill netters are left in the state. There's not that. There's way more that guys in gill nets, that's for sure. Probably fifteen guys in gill nets, yeah. Late matter. I don't see many of them coming off. And as far as catching and targeting surf bass from gill net, that's a big time. Just, except state gear, you don't catch much. They, the bottom's too thick, they're sealed with shadow. It's mostly small gear, you're not gonna have huge trash. What you do, the gear's gonna be a straight ass. But again, if I push a bag, you're not taking enough of what you're, you're already trying. So what's the difference? If you're gonna throw that dead, naked, usable prop, turn that discard, because that's bad. Into an actual lake. As far as carrying out four totes of skilled stuff on your boat, a heist, a page on end, God bless you, I would.
Thank you. Better.
Kind of stuck with commercial fishing again. I just uh, it's just trying to be responsible, that's all we're trying to do is uh, I mean, one of the fishing for blue fish, one of the fishing for stuff we run in the strippers, might as well bring it in. I mean, if people, they think there's gonna be a whole bunch of waiting effort and people going along out there and setting gill nets and everything. The state has a system in place, you gotta get tagged, which have your ID on it so they know who you are, there's limits to gill nets that you have that you can only fish. There's hours, days, there's a whole ton of regulations that go on with it. And at the end, so last gill net that got built, I got a area of building the other day. And it cost them nineteen thousand dollars. So random value thinks he's gonna go on and buy a six or seven hundred dollar net. He probably gonna have to get three or four of them, he's gonna go spend ten, ten grand that's set to go gill net and catch five strippers, I don't see a waiting effort. I think uh, people are thinking back to maybe Joe, I'm not trying to call anyone out, but people have a bad image of gill nets. I guess because of uh, these floating gill nets that they had back when this whole thing got, the prohibition on gill nets happened on strike bass. I just think it's time to remove, remove that and this let us keep the five fish and this equals everybody else. I mean, there's not many of us, it might be generously fifteen. I mean, there's four of us out of one unit, maybe five, excuse me, there's five. So I think it's not a huge number of people. I've seen at least five more rod and real boats show up every year selling fish at the dealer, catching the five fish. I see people on Southwest ledge fishing in Federal Water, it's illegal with a rod and reel. You know, I'm not trying to go against people, but I'm just trying to say let us be even. Enforcement, it's a real, you know, you're gonna catch them, you're hauling. You know, even enforcement, it's not a hard uh, it's more of a harder thing now to be the same thing. Is they're gonna say how can enforcement do it? It's the same as they come checking me on the boat when I have a straight one on my boat. I have a gill net on my boat, so they're saying exact then. I can't have a striker, so I gotta throw over. It creates discard, discard will end up taking eventually the quota. There's a ton of discards, they take discard, every discard I have, I'm welcome for you to keep. So let's keep letting everyone throw over dead fish and guess what? You can see your five fish go down to two fish, go down to one fish, and we'll start completely back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dean, uh, Dean DeSantis. Um, down a gill net. That's all, I mean, both times commercial fisherman for thirty nine years. So we're just trying to do the right thing here, to avoid discards. There's nothing worse than throwing over dead fish. That's probably the single worst thing than a fisherman has to be. So whatever we can do to avoid that, help the resource and economic, you know, makes horrible sense economically and there's no, there is absolutely no benefit to managing the fishery if you're creating this. So there's no reason why one particular gear type should not be allowed to fish for any fish, any fish. It's just gonna hopefully we can, you know, we can get, solve the discard problem and be fair to all the users.
Thank you. I'm actually gonna go, we have a few hands up on the Zoom since it looks like uh, we don't see any new first timers, we'll come back to the lot, sorry.
Alright, let's go with Chris Lotts.
Hi, so obviously my name's Chris Lotts, I'm a commercial fisherman and I also work with my father Adam Lotts, Lotts, so zinc, we're a fish dealer. And I think this is a great idea. I think that there's a lot of incidental catch and it's a lot of dead and injured fish that are being thrown back. And this may be to quell some rod and reelers, there's a lot more fish than you think. Five fish for a gill netter is not a lot. They're catching a lot more and throwing a lot more back. And uh, I just like this, whoever said before me, there's not a lot of gill netters left. There's not a lot of things to fish for. And yeah, that's about it. I support it and I know most guys that we uh, service also support it.
Thank you.
Henry Mataronis.
Can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay, yeah, I'm a gill netter, I'm a point, fish potter for black sea bass. You know, I heard some of the charter guys saying let's all work together so we can take the best care of the resource. And now they're saying, some of them are saying, some of the recreational guys say, no, we don't want the gill netters to catch these. Well, the reason we got a lot of this quota is because when the gill netters did catch it twenty or thirty years ago, that brought the quota to Rhode Island. So we don't catch many, but we do catch some. And this proposal will level the playing field for everyone. It'll be the same as rod and real fishery gets. And I've been asking, when I catch a few fish, I've been asking the EDM officers if they'd like to come down and grab some and bring them to some home that could cook them up. But they said that's not allowable because I'd have it on my boat. You can't even have them on the boat. We only catching an incidental catch. We, we can't max out more than what we have onboard, which generally fifty pounds of fluke. So we can't catch more than fifty pounds. I've seen the rod and reel guys bringing one fish that weighs fifty pounds. So I don't know what their problem is. I think as the law stands now, it's very discriminatory to the gill net fish. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, seeing no one else on Zoom, we'll open it up one last time.
Yeah, Carl Tissney again, just recreational angler. Interesting conversation. I don't have a uh, a dog in this fight. Uh, but so just a question for you. The uh, the discards that the gill nets currently get, do you have to report those? Do they count against the commercial allocation?
So just to clarify, they, they uh, can, and they have an opportunity to report them in their.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Yes, they can be reported, it's not required.
Okay, not required.
Go ahead, Mark.
Mark, sure. When they are recorded, are they indeed taken off our quote?
If you want to.
So discards are estimated for the stock assessment through statistical methods. It's not any direct data submitted by fishermen to account for those discards. But we do have a discard mortality rate that's been investigated through research proposals. We apply that rate to the estimated discards to estimate discards by gear type for the stock assessment.
Stock assessment, that is reduced the quote?
It goes into the overall assessment, so it doesn't necessarily reflect our quota. The quota that we've had has been set in place for a long time. We've taken no, the annual quota stays the same every single year. It only gets reduced through certain actions.
So do those actions reduce our quota on an annual basis as we're fishing?
Our annual quota stays the same. The actions that reduce our quota were most recently addendum four and addendum six. Those were coastwide commercial reductions that we took. It was not just reductions due to discards.
If I sell fish for the different piece by all fish have said. Does the fish that they discard not useful?
No, like, so as we said, again, it can be reported to us as discards, but that does not count against our individual state quota. Only the directed landings that come in as directed landing reports count towards our state quota as required.
You know, the power of this, in other words, now if you catch it, whereas now we do point that buy catch, in other words, and if these legal, legal prevents key five fish, it's taking off the general category. Another one is required status report, is following the speed of that is gonna be a little fight, we should attach, could we be taken off the general category, not in the stock effect as well.
Yeah, if it's landed, it would come off the quote.
Yes, whereas now we
Correct.
Just one more, Mark, sure, and one more, our question. The gentleman mentioned something about the tag, assuming the tag will take place in the same way that the problem tag, had to deal with the category.
Uh, he was referring to gill net tags. All nets must be tagged in the state. Any other comments on strike bass?
So it's gonna be the thirty four, which dead fish that we wanted to be able to sell, right?
It would be the exact same regulations as the general category, all twenty eight inch or all the thirty four unless fish. That would be correct. Alright, we have one more Zoom.
Rick Bellvance.
Thank you, uh, Rick Bellvance, Priority Fishing charters. Um, this is, this is definitely a, a a tough, tough decision for me. I, I, I don't think I either support it or reject it, to be honest with you. I've heard the arguments about the discarded fish and I, I definitely think the smart place to turn discards into landing, I support all the different user groups in the fishing community and, and certainly sympathetic to the arguments that everybody should be given an opportunity when um, when, when they can. And at the same time, I also can see some unintended consequences of a program like this where gear conflicts might arise and, you know, people will find loopholes here and there. So um, I don't want to support it or, or not support it, but I would just make a recommendation that maybe there's a way um, if the program is implemented, there would be a sunset clause for two years and, and maybe have a review to to figure out if there were any uh, changes that could be made to the program to make it better. That would be my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Um, Ben is in Rhode Island, for uh, short ground angler. Yeah, I, I think a lot of us here can remember when gill netting was more popular. And as Rick just mentioned, with your conflict, area issues was, was big. There were a bunch of special regulations that were put in place back then. I don't know if those regs are still on the books, Josiah, maybe you know. Um, I'm, I'm not up to snuff with the gillnet regs like I used to be, like the gill always to be. So uh, I, I definitely like the idea of allowing them a buy catch, and so them will catch, because I don't want them wasted. But I'm just a little concerned about the availability of what we gill netting currently uh, potential here for certain zones. And uh, just things that we really need to kind of keep an eye on.
Thank you. I will state we still have spacing and marking requirements in those. And that one's. And that one's.
And there's this great, and you can't set, the next amount of food out of the river, you're there.
Oh, that's right. Actually, I, like I said, I wasn't up to snuff with the current regs, so. Thank you. Any other comments for commercial strike bass then? Okay, so now we're gonna move on to summer flounder twenty twenty two recreational management. We have two industry proposals. I should clarify, we are expecting a small liberalization. That's what's generating these proposals. I should clarify, we are expecting a small liberalization. That's what's generating these proposals. Uh, our first proposal is for a nineteen inch size limit, with the exception of one fish that could be kept at sixteen inches minimum size. Uh, and just to note, uh, this, because our special shore sites are at seventeen inches, this would eliminate the need for special shore sites. Uh, it would actually be better than seventeen inches at the special shore. Um, and then proposal two is also an industry proposal, which would lower the minimum size to eighteen inches for the general recreational. And keep the special shore at two fish seventeen inches. Any comments on 2022 recreational summer flounder? Yes.
Richard Chalcy, Fish and Dussel Drifter, I am in, uh, agreeance with proposal number two.
Thank you. In the back.
It's, uh, in favor of proposal number two. Uh, and for anybody who's in favor of proposal number one. I, I'm just kind of curious, what are you gonna do with sixteen inch with different plays on it? I mean, maybe they hold it. Not a lot of use for it.
Thank you.
Uh, Rich Ginninger, Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers. Um, I'm in favor of proposal number one. Um, the idea is the minimum size for, uh, commercial fishing for fluke is fourteen inches. Uh, so there is a lot of harvest for, uh, fluke in the fourteen to nineteen inch range, um, you know, primarily, uh, commercial fishing. The idea of taking some sixteen inch fish is to take some males in the harvest. By the time you get to a nineteen inch fish, it's almost 100% female. Um, I have been working with the Mid-Atlantic Fisheries Management Council. Uh, and this is a proposal that they are considering to allow some harvest of these smaller fish, which would be roughly, uh, half males. Uh, so you, you then get recreational fishermen harvesting some males. The other idea is many people who go out in the bay are going out to fish and they want to catch one fish to take home for dinner. They're not looking to catch six nineteen inch fish. They'd like to get to one. And now they'll fish all day long and catch twenty or thirty fluke and not catch one that's nineteen inches. Uh, they'll be releasing all those fish. And so there's a large discard mortality. Allowing somebody to have one sixteen inch fish may stop some of the people from continually fishing. They'll take one, that'll be dinner in terms of their flounder. And then they'll go looking for some black sea bass, or they'll go looking for some scuba, you know, or they'll take some pressure off of the fluke and reduce the amount of discard mortality. Uh, so that's the idea between the one fish at sixteen inches. Support proposal one. Thank you.
Great.
Hi, John. Yeah, I, I'll second what Rich said. In the primary, just to reiterate just a little bit, we don't think forcing all recreational anglers to just target large breeding females is a healthy concept in general. And we're, we're trying to get away from that because we don't think long term, that just can't be good for any fisheries. So you get a chance to take a few males, you get three or four people in a boat, that's still, that's four shorts that normally you would have thrown back during the course of the day. If you get four goddamn short fluke, now they can at least be kept. So we're in favor of that. And I speak for Rissa for this one. We support proposal one.
Thanks, if you just don't mind re stating again, Greg Teske. Thanks. In the front.
Rich Fowley, once again, I'm in support of proposal number one in accordance with the wishes of Rich Ginninger and Greg Teske, and Ray Lottz.
Thank you. In the back.
Yes, Captain Yolvy again. Sure, this is important, which you mentioned as well, and I'm, uh, for number one.
Thank you.
Yeah, Harry Livingston, uh, Riser and Aquinac Striper team. Uh, I also agree on proposal one.
Yes.
Uh, Matt Cox, Laura Hamm, and Stella C. I am on board with proposal two.
Uh, you sir.
Yeah, Danny Dillon, Persuader. I am also in support of proposal number two.
You men?
Susan Lima, Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers. Um, I'm in support of proposal one, basically because it would allow me to catch a fish that I could eat. There are many days that we're out there that we may catch thirty or forty fish and not have a single nineteen inch fish on board. So at least I can take a couple of fish home to eat.
In the back.
By the way, Fish Machine Charters, supportive of proposal number two.
Thank you. Frank.
Uh, Frank Wout, Frank asleep. I also support number two, because it's getting rid of the nineteen inch size limit. Where we're trying to keep, you know, if you want to let the larger fish go, people have more of a chance of keeping fish between seventeen and nineteen. On the first one, you're keeping one fish and you're still throwing all the fish back, having between sixteen and nineteen. So I think there's going to be fewer discards, actually, out of proposal number two.
Thank you. Sorry, Josiah.
See him, fish necks, and I know what I'm throwing back is much rather than what I, for the smaller.
Thank you. Yes.
Uh, Ben is in broad, uh, shore angler, Rhode Island. Um, I thought a lot about these two proposals. Um, and, and like I, I mentioned before, when we were talking about these, I mean, the thing that really impacts the shorebound angler the most is, is an increase in size. The higher you go, the more unlikely it is that a shore angler can actually get one next week. I've done a good job with that over the years, but it's still tough. Fluke are still tough. I mean, to catch a, a fluke over eighteen or nineteen inches from shore is not a very common thing. And, uh, I would say the one fish at sixteen inches gives a sure angle of, uh, much more of a reasonable chance to take them home, uh, to eat. I know they're not the biggest, but you know, back in the day, we used to keep twelve inches, they tasted pretty tender. But, um, so I, I have to support proposal number one.
Thank you. Yes.
James Mount, Big Game Sport Fishing. We're in favor of proposal number two.
Thank you. Over here, sir.
Yeah, Roger Cici, um, also a catfish, that, you know, getting banned, that, that would, you know, that part, get out. Uh, too many times, catch a lot of fish, nothing's able, um, so on.
Thank you. Yes.
Uh, Tom Malone, Risa member. Um, I fish probably forty or forty-five trips a year. I'm a recreational guy, private boat owner. And for the last three seasons or so, we've seen the fluke population go down and down and down with the bigger fish. I don't know why that is, but it's a fact. I also have an opportunity to fish with some friends that are commercial guys that go out. And most of the fish taken are less than twenty inches, less than nineteen inches. And those fish that are in that size, each season, the numbers, the numbers go down. I think it's important, you know, to look at it from a lens of preserving this fishery, because it, it's, it's an awesome and amazing fishery that we have here in Rhode Island. These fish are just unbelievable to catch. I think it's, uh, from the recreational standpoint, it's, 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 it's one of the best fish, the fish for Rhode Island. Um, and it's important that we preserve that. And I think the best way to do that is to save those females that are in that nineteen inch plus range. And on my boat, again, I fish a lot. I'm one of those guys that, you know, the friends that I have that fish, uh, I'm on speed dial, they call me every day. And, and, and the other people that don't get it, think I'm obsessed. But it gives me an opportunity to see, you know, like the commercial guys, what's coming out of here. I fish from Block Island South all the way off Newport, and I, and I, and I've seen, especially this past season, most of the fish are between, I don't know, fourteen or fifteen inches to sixteen and seventeen inches. And getting those, those big door maxes, it, it's, it's just not occurring as often. When you do, it's special. So we, you know, we need to think about that. That's really the most important piece of this. So we can all, you know, the commercial guys can have the fishery, the recreational guys can enjoy it. And for those reasons, I support proposal one.
Thank you. In the back.
I, I would just like to add, uh, to my comment earlier, uh, and, uh, I would be in favor of instead of a six fish limit, I would be in favor of a four fish limit. You know, if, if we were looking at something along those lines, I would be in favor of that. You know, I, I will say that, and not to cross species here, but fact of the matter is that sea bass are, in my opinion, overwhelming fluke and taking away the fluke source. They're a more aggressive predator. So, you know, fluke is an ambush predator, we all know that. And they're not going to chase down their bait like the sea bass will. So I think that that's, that's a big part of the issue. Um, and not to cross state lines either, but if you look at the numbers from the Antarctic Shoal, you'll see a very similar thing starting to happen there. In regards to the size, I think we should really grapple and, uh, you know, the size limit, I, I, like I said, I'm, I'm in favor of proposal two. I wouldn't be upset one bit if instead of six fish, it's four fish. So, uh, that's why I voted the way I did, or made my opinion, the way I did on the sea bass and the fluke.
Thank you. All right, I think we're gonna go to the Zoom. We've got quite a few hands raised here and then we'll come back.
Dave Gordon.
Hello, um, I would like to vote on proposal one or support proposal one, I should say. I've been one of those fishermen, me and my wife, many times where we fished a long time to try to catch a nineteen inch fish. And we threw back quite a few smaller ones. Um, and, and it does make sense to take a male and leave, leave some of the females. Okay, so support number one. Thank you.
Thanks.
Rick Bellavance.
Hi, uh, thank you, Rick Bellavance, Rhode Island Party and Charter Boat Association. Uh, our association supports proposal number two. I think it's. I struggle with the fluke fishery in general, like others have already noted. I don't think it's in as good a shape as the assessment would lead us to believe. But here we are in a opportunity to liberalize. So, um, I think that the lowering of the size limit from nineteen inches to eighteen inches will give, uh, the most anglers the best chance of getting a couple of fish to come home with. I think that taking one of the smaller fish away from the shore fishing and, uh, probably isn't necessary. I think, um, leaving them at the seventeen inches and then dropping the size to eighteen inches would probably work best. Thanks.
Thanks.
Dave's iPhone.
Hi, sorry, Dave Grazoli, um, Dave's iPhone. Risa member, recreational fisherman, private boat owner. Um, yeah, I, I that we're looking at are a small liberalization of a fish that we've seen, at least me personally, it seemed as a rapid decline of the last five years. I mean, it, it used to be an awesome fishery and, and now I fear that we're at the brink of maybe losing it. In the last several years, we, we haven't even addressed the possession limit. We're, we're just told there, you know, it's not being overfished, right? So it, it's just puzzling. Um, and again, crossing lines, we go back to the black sea bass. I mean, there's a fish that you feel like it's, I mean, you could walk on them across the water and we're looking at a reduction. So, uh, from a fisheries management standpoint, it just really stops a big question mark for me on really what, what we're looking at here. But anyway, so, um, I, I do support proposal number one. Um, I think proposal number one with the reduced bag limit that was mentioned earlier to four fish. Um, I, I think would first make the most sense. You're looking at one male and maybe three other fish greater. I think that would be, um, better for the, the, the fish industry, the fishing, uh, stock itself. Yeah, I just really think we should be looking at a, at some sort of bag reduction here and, and try to bring this fishery back to what it used to be. Thank you.
Thanks.
Richard Wright. You're unmuted, Richard, so go ahead. You're speaking, we cannot hear you.
We can come back to you later.
Roger Tellier.
Yes, Roger Tyler, I'm a recreational fisherman and I support proposal number one. Thank you.
Thanks.
Don Wood.
Hi, Dawn Philatra Wood. I'm a private boat owner, recreational fisherman and president of Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers. I think the thought behind this from our membership was, because someone posed this question, is if you take one at sixteen inches, they're trying to not only, somebody referred to it as reduce the bycatch, but more, it's, um, if you get, you get that fluke, you might move on to a different species, I think was the thinking behind that, just to answer that question. Our organization supports proposal one. Thank you.
Thanks.
Michael Hagan.
This is Michael Hagan. I support proposal number one. I'm associated with, uh, Risa. Thank you.
Thanks.
Brian Bacon.
Hi, this is Brian Bacon, Big Game Sport Fishing. Uh, we support proposal number two. Thank you.
Thanks.
Roman.
Hi, my name is Roman Dudis and I support, uh, proposal number one. Um, I see people, um, shore fishing and, um, struggling to catch and be able to even take one fish home. So that's why I'm choosing proposal number one. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Lawrence Adino.
Yeah, Lawrence Adino, uh, recreational angler, member of Riser. And I support proposal number one. But I still could live with number two. I think that both of them are an improvement over what we have now. Thank you.
Thanks.
TJ Harris.
Hi, TJ Harris, uh, member of Riser and also vice president of Aquinac Island Striper Team, uh, in support of proposal number one. I think it'd be a good idea to give some of the bigger females a break and make it a little bit easier for some, some people that have struggled uh, to, to take home some meat, uh, every time. And would also be in support of a total bag limit reduction to four or five fish a day. Thank you.
Thanks.
Island Current. Island Current.
Hello, my name's Captain Chris Cullen, I'm in favor of proposal number two.
Thanks.
Paul Phillips.
Hi, Paul Phillips, recent member. I support proposal one, sometimes it's really hard to get an eighteen inch fish, fishing all day and bringing home something for dinner is, is not a bad thing. I would also support a, a smaller bag limit. Six fish isn't really necessary for anybody.
Thanks.
Tom H.
We can come back to you, Tom.
Oh, I'm here. Tom Hood, I support proposal one, I'm also a member of RISA and the Aquinic Island Striper. Thank you.
Mike.
Yep, Mike Chiforos, recreational angler on my own boat. I'm in favor of number one, but you got to reduce the bag limit. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kenny Mendez.
Hi, I'm a recreational angler, I believe in protecting the stock in the nineteen inch females, so that's proposal one, and I'd be in favor of a lower bag limit as well, thank you.
Next up is Murray Home Computer, but you don't have any audio connected, so I'm going to put your hand down and if you enjoy audio, we can come back to you, otherwise you can submit a written comment via email. Carol Mellow.
Hi, Carol Mellow here, I'm a RISA member and recreational fisherman. I do support proposal one, but I would actually like to see even more fish be under nineteen inches to save even more of the, the mama fish. I think that we are in trouble with the stock and even a few less fish would be good. I don't know anybody that's really meeting that quota, that bag limit right now. And so it doesn't, it doesn't really need, maybe it doesn't need to be changed, but I just know that there aren't many people meeting that right now. And so, but I would like to see, you know, even proposal number two would be okay. We need to be able to catch smaller fish and leave the big fish there, the females, thank you.
Thanks.
Fred DeFinesse.
Yes, yes, Fred DeFinesse, I'm a recreational angler, boat owner, RISA member. I support proposal one, I would also support a lower bag limit. And I think the reason is, we've got to reduce the number of releases or discards in this fishery. Excuse me, we're, we're catching at least ten or fifteen to one shorts to keepers. And if, if you've got two or three anglers on the boat, you could be releasing or discarding well upwards of a hundred fish a day. And I think this would go a long way to reducing that, thank you.
Thanks.
Bill Sokolowski.
Hi, recreational angler, member of RISA, I support proposal one, reduce the bag limit, who needs six fluke? And I certainly have to question, what does it do to the fishery with the commercial guys taking fourteen inch fish?
Thanks.
Carlos Coggers.
Hi, Carlos Coggers, RISA member, boat owner, recreational fisherman. I also support proposal one, and I also support reducing the bag limit. I agree with the previous speakers, nobody needs six fluke a day, thank you.
Thanks.
James Mantow.
Hi, out of state fisherman, member of RISA and Aquinic Island Striper Team, and I'm full support for proposal number one, thank you.
Thanks.
Peter Episo, Episma.
Yeah, hi, thanks. I support proposal number one, I could live with number two. But I think we're all missing, a lot of people mentioned tonight, that six fish a day is ridiculous. I don't know anybody's caught six fish in recreational fishing in a long time. That I, and I can never, all the time, all the years I've been listening to these meetings and stuff and workshops, that we can't take two fish off of the daily fish bag limit and add two smaller fish so we can get a meal out of this. Just can never understand it, so do whatever you can, but I support number one basically, thank you.
Thanks.
Bob M.
Yes, I've seen fluke over the past ten years decrease year after year after year. You've got to go farther and farther to catch fewer and fewer. Ten years ago, you could catch your limit, not go more than three miles from the, the center wall at Point Judith. I, I support proposal number one. I would support proposal number two if the bag limit were reduced, because I think the effect of proposal number two will be, be removing more fish from the water. Although they're smaller and some of them will be male, you'll still be removing more fish from the, from the population. So I would support a bag limit reduction in two. I would also support a reduction in bag limit for number one as well, thank you.
Thanks, can you state your last name again, please? Murray.
Eric Jacob.
Hello, my name is Eric Jacob, I'm a boat owner and I'm a member of RISA. I support number one, partly because I believe that when we're fishing for fluke, there's a lot of times we gut hook fish. And being able to keep a sixteen inch fish is definitely a plus when considering that sometimes we have to throw away a dead fish. And, and I find that's kind of wasteful. I also support lowering the bag limits too, I think six fish is way too many, thank you.
Thanks.
DG F.
Hi, Dustin Stevens, I agree with proposal number two. I think it helps the shore angler a lot more. I also agree with a lower bag limit from six down to four, that's it.
Thanks.
And Richard Bright, we'll come back to you.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Got it.
Yeah, I'm a recent member and I agree with proposal number one. And the comments Bob Murray made, I mean, every year it's less and less fish, so proposal one would be my choice and a, and a lower bag limit.
Thanks. All right, we got through the Zoom queue, look for one last chance to make comment, Peter.
Sure, Peter Jenkins on Saltwater Edge in Silicon Valley, RISA member. I'm certainly, you know, my customers comment the frustration and the decline. And so I, I support proposal number one in consideration of reducing the bag limit.
Thanks.
Sir, Steve Doobie, RISA member, I support proposal number one. In the lower bag will be great even though it's not on the board. But I don't know anybody taking six fish a day now, so lower, lower bag limit to four probably wouldn't change anything. But would might lobby to take two fish home that day instead of just one, you know, having a sixteen inch minute. Keep the females healthy would be great.
Thanks, Charlie.
I can't tell you how many days we, we couldn't find a keeper of fluke last summer or the summer before. We get so many of seventeen, eighteen, eighteen and a half inches off. And these fish, a large number, Nicole, maybe you can test this, but I believe there's a twenty percent mortality rate. Because when he was a watch horse, going down into the gills. So most of those fish we catch and release is going to die. So as Rich Hitman just said, if you can get a few fish, one fish or two fish for the people, they're happy with that, they've got their meal and they're going to go on a different fishery. So as to move that, I would support two, plan two, and I would even give up a fish, like someone else said, six is a, is a lot, it is. But to show sincerity, you know, to work for the fish, I would give up one fish, make it five, and give us three fish at seventeen. So proposal number two is where I would go. Yeah, I'm looking at it as a, as a charter tap, you know. You've got to, you know, that's my perspective, so I know some people say, well, that's a lot of fish, but you know, the charter groups, they, they want to come home with a few fish. And the way it is now at nineteen inches, I mean, you know, you could take ten, fifteen, twenty fish and throw them all back. So at least, you know, congratulate you for coming down, didn't win that nineteen inch, and give us another option of the, of the sixteen inch or the, the two with seventeen, so appreciate it.
Thanks, do you mind just restate your name for the comment?
Yeah, Charlie Donlin, Snapper.
Thank you. Sir.
Hi, this is Ryan Zack, putting fan on Rob Elders, I just wanted to my spoken proposal number one.
Thanks. Good sir.
Rich Powell Cody from AIST, I like the six fish today. Want it because I don't go out everything. So when I go out, if they're there, I want to catch them.
Thank you. Thanks. Frank.
Yes, thank you, Frank, well, Francis Lee, I think there's a misconception on the six fish, because almost everybody I've heard say that nobody's catching it. And I think too, I know this is not a question and answer session, but I think you probably have to lower the bag limit to probably two, because most anglers are catching less than two fish. So if you want to affect landings on fluke, you're going to have to go down so low that it is going to be one or two fish. If that's the means that you want to use to control mortality. You could probably raise the bag limit to ten fish, it would have no effect on mortality, because it's not being realized. So with that, I support option two with six fish.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Greg Hamilton, Lauren Stossi, I also. I bear proposal two.
Thanks. Sir.
Mark Pacheco, RISA member and Aquinic Island Striper Team member. I support proposal number one, I think it's better for the fluke stock. And it makes, it just makes the most sense for the fishery.
Thanks. All right, seeing no other hands, we're going to move on to the next. So next up is 2022 to tag recreational management. We have, we'll do comments on each proposal separately because they are a little bit different from each other. The first proposal is for a, what I would call a trophy slot, allowing for one, so basically make a minimum size of sixteen inch, but only allowing one fish kept greater than twenty-one inches. And reducing the possession limit for the final wave of the season, for the, for the final period of the season to four fish. Any comments on proposal one for recreational to tag? Yes. Okay, so. I think without question in the fall, the tag fishery has become the, one of the most prominent fisheries here on the East Coast. Rhode Island tag is unbelievable. It's, it's, it's a destination fishery. And I know the statement will be made that the fish stock is healthy, and we certainly concur with that. But it's more than healthy, we've got a phenomenal mix of gear classes. You've got the opportunity to catch eight, ten, twelve, sixteen, twenty, we had two twenty pound tag caught in one day this last year. And that fishery is pulling in business, it's keeping talks, shops open, it's keeping charters busy. And we would like to preserve that because it's really, really special. If you fish on the East Coast, Rhode Island's where you go for tag in the fall. There are fish, they release well, they don't travel, they're not going to end up being trawled in a shrimp trawler in the Carolinas. They're not going to end up in a gill net in Maryland, there are fish. So we would like to preserve that fishery and not wait for it to collapse. There's nothing left to backstop it, if tag goes in the fall, we've got no false striper run. It's, tag is it, and we can take care of it. So we'd like to see a one fish trophy that, the guys that are good at tags will tell you, they can sit on eight, ten, twelve pounders and just hammer the snot out of them. And, and those thankfully are going to be some of the captains that will speak that we don't want to see that happen. So we'd like to encourage a one fish trophy size to keep the ability to catch a trophy, catch your personal best, catch your club record, catch the state record which was caught this year. We don't want to take that away at all, but we want to try to protect them. And we'd like to see four fish in the fall, not five. And that's, we think this is our real chance to make a difference while the fishery is still healthy. Thanks, and if I could just have your name again, Greg Gatsby for RISA and our affiliate clubs, thank you. Sir.
Yeah, Captain Hunter, Cloud of Talk, Charles, operator. I think, like, Greg said, you're pretty much in the red side. We do have the biggest tag fishery, that's in the East Coast, you know, this is the second to this, yeah. But if you look at that, the path from Jersey, those guys who have the fishery, you know, in New York, it used to be good, they, they got over fish. And at the rate that these fish grow, you have to say proactively not react to this fishery. You know, and I like that we have, you know, one, one trophy fish, I still have to draw the action, come, catch a big fish, you get it now, it's a big picture. But we're going to like a fisher, yeah, and it's, it's already happened behind us, three states to our west, and it's kind of, it's going to happen. So if guys aren't proactive now, it's going to be too late, you know, I, I can see, you know, the bag limit going three fish, you know, see them on a defined map. But if we can at least do this, it's a step in our direction on, on overland, in favor of the vote of one.
Thank you, sir.
Phil Duckett, recreational fisherman, RISA member and Aquinic Island Striper Team member, and, and I fully support proposal one, the reason stated. And, and also like reducing the bag limit towards the end of the fall from currently five fish to four and potentially even maybe three to keep some of the out of state fishermen who come up here and, and jump in on our fish.
Thanks. In the back.
So, Dan Smith, Aquinic Angels charters, I would like, so I'm in favor of this proposal, first and foremost. And I, I agree with Captain Hunter over there, the three fish, I'm, I'm all for that. I'm sure that most of the charter fleet would also agree. When it comes to the big females, we don't want to see those leave the water. We want those to go back healthy, we want those to go back alive. You know, I, I would say that that over twenty-one inch fish, you know, if it, if it's a state record, you get more glory out of letting it go if it's a female, if it's a male, I'd say fair game. But I, I would say that that larger fish should not be allowed to be female. You know, the amount of eggs that that fish consumes every year, it's, it's not like, it's not like fluke where it can be tricky to tell the difference. You know which one's a male, which one's a female when it comes to the frog. So that, that's where I would like to, that's where I'd like to sit on that.
Thanks. Rich. Rich Gitter, Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers, I just wanted to support proposal number one. As has been mentioned, Greg, Greg said, we've got a great fishery here for to tag. The problem is that we're actually attracting a lot of out of state boats who relocate here for that season in the fall where it goes to five fish. Now by reducing it to four fish, there's a little lower incentive for those out of state boats to come here. I've heard a lot of complaints about these out of state boats coming here and fishing hard on our to tag. Most of the people who are their customers are, are following them. So they are coming from New York, New Jersey and Pennsylvania. These, these guys are driving up here and they're fishing on these to tag, catching a lot of them and then driving home. They're not, they're not buying Rhode Island fishing licenses and they're actually putting very little into our economy because the businesses that they're supporting, if they're from out of state, are New York businesses. So I just, I just feel that the four fish is a good move and the. and the limiting one very large fish is a good move. It'd be great if they could be only males, but, uh, I don't think you can trust people to be able to, uh, sex to tag. I, I certainly know the difference, but I don't think, uh, everybody does. Thanks.
Ralph Craft, RISA member, Quinney County Striper member, member, and, uh, craft team and customers. Uh, I'm in favor of proposal number one. I think it's very important to protect this fishery. Uh, it's, it's, we said, very lucrative, it's one of the best around. Uh, I'm also concerned about the out-of-state boats. Uh, this is something that keeps the charter boats going, uh, in our local area. So, one thing is, I just want us to be able to follow up on the boats that are in our area, leave, and how we can find out what they're doing to our population and be able to track it, so that we can help ourselves to protect our own fish. Thank you.
Thanks. You, sir? Yeah, yes, sir.
Uh, Tom Malone, recent member, private boat owner. Uh, Greg, um, said something when he was talking that, that's really what we need the key in on. And the word was "our," it's, it is our fishery, it's our state. And as I stated earlier, I, I do, you know, a tremendous amount of fishing. In addition to fluke to tag is one thing that, you know, I love to target my fish a lot with. And with what Rich was talking about, I can attest to it. Uh, especially out on Bretons, it is, it's disgraceful. It, it's like a floating city, and our, our charter guys are suffering. Our, you know, our recreational fishery is suffering. Um, I witnessed stuff out there, this past fall especially, with some of the guys, uh, some of these out-of-state boats that have absolutely no respect for other boaters, whether it's a recreational guy or even some of our, our most skilled charter guys that not only know how to fish and, and put clients on fish, but respect what we have here, and, and it is special. So, you know, the state needs to look at, at that and, and look at it from that lens, that it, it is ours. It's our responsibility to preserve it, it's our responsibility to protect it. You know, the water is for everyone, you know, I'm not saying that it's not, and we need to respect that part of it. But something needs to be done to, to save this fishery, because we can't, we can't have this year after year, fall after fall. The same thing that happened in Jersey, same thing that happened in New York, will happen here. And then we'll be left, you know, with the fishery that is absolutely unbelievable ruined. So, I support proposal number one.
Thanks.
Peter Jenkins, Saltwater Edge, I support the idea that we witnessed, uh, to our west, the decline. We have a great situation here, it's time to be proactive and manage it over the longer term. But, uh, report proposal one.
Thanks, you, sir?
Hi, Ted Slade, I'm putting down Rod Belders. Uh, again, I support proposal one. Uh, growing in Jersey, I grew up on all those articles that our story wrote about three caught fish and sixteen pounders coming off the recs. I also have an education from refuge in Jersey as a Fisher science. Um, one of the things we studied was how they took our artificial reefs and the weight, the weights would destroy the reef, because the boats were, so many boats were targeting the same reefs that was affecting the fishery. Fortunately, we have a lot of rock. But, uh, again, we have something very special here, and we've seen from the past what our neighbors to the west have, have done and how they failed. Uh, we have the opportunity to protect something that's really special, to see it through with us.
Thanks. In the back?
Rob Tista, recent member, kayak fisherman. Yeah, totally on board, it's great seeing, uh, everyone here wanting to protect this resource. I wanna protect this resource, I wanna be fishing it for the rest of my life, fully support proposal one.
Thanks. You, sir?
Rich Foulcoy from RISI AIST, I would support a proposal number one, particularly the aspect of, uh, possibly de-incentivizing out-of-state boats relocating here. Thank you.
Thanks. In the back?
Captain Joe, I almost have a choice, I'm also in support of that, to go there. Like you said, Rich said, it's like a city out there, uh, off of Breton, it's crazy. We've got a great fishery here, and it feels great to live there. And we do seem to learn, awesome, all for it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Captain Mike Royalfield from Martin's Stars, and I'm in total support of proposal one. I would be happy with three fish a day also, instead of four. I mean, this was an epic year we had, the number of fifteen, I mean, double-digit tags that we caught this year, all these charter boats here. I mean, everybody, I see it with the last bracket, Sarah Snar, all these guys. It's gonna get worse next year, we'll do something now, because now we've got the reputation. We're here for double-digit tag, all these guys in Jersey and New York are gonna come here, gonna wipe it out of us. So, we have to do something to help us.
Thanks. In the back?
Uh, Coralie, I love Sarah's charters. Um, I am definitely in support of proposal one. Uh, like Mike said, I'd also like to see a state of three, that would be fine with me, three fish a day, uh, per person. Um, over my time working on charter boat, uh, I've seen a point, uh, a city, like they, they said, of boats out there. And a lot of times on Facebook, you'll see, um, you know, these big out-of-state boats, uh, saying that they're living out day after day. And that's a lot of tag to be taken every single day. And I also do a lot of fish tagging, and I tagged a lot of tag, and I did so last season, and I got a few, quite a few returns back. And, um, many of the returns told me that the tag were only done about a half an inch a year, which is extremely slow. And if we keep, um, what we're doing, not, not preserving the fishery, uh, it will collapse, there's really no question about it.
Thanks. You, sir?
Charlie Riley, uh, kayak angler, RISA member, AIST member. Um, I think the enthusiasm for serving the fishery in here is blatantly obvious. Um, like everyone's saying, had an unbelievable fishery on the tag, and we need to keep it that way. Um, I've heard a few charter captains mention that they'd be okay with three fish a day. I think that's more than okay to do three fish a day all season. Um, the more that we can serve this fishery, the better. Um, slow-growing fish, uh, we just have to keep it, um, you know, not take too many fish out of the ocean.
Okay. Thanks. You, sir?
Ben Zambra, um, Rhode Island. Uh, I also think proposal, uh, number one is, is good. Um, you know, once upon a time, we had a couple of different species that could be targeted by private charter boats in the fall, striped bass, bluefish. Nobody fishes for them anymore. Everybody's pounding tag and sea bass, it's a ground fishery now in fall. In the late fall especially. Uh, that's the only game we have in town, we, we gotta, we gotta protect it. Because if that goes, you're gonna be fishing for pack.
Thanks. You, sir?
Dave Doobie, RISA member, um, I fully support this proposal also, uh, proposal one. And I don't understand why we have an increase in bag limit from October fifteenth to December thirty-first. It's the only fish out there that we're fishing for at that time, so why should we be able to hammer them harder? Uh, I think it should be a free fish for, for the bag limit.
Thanks. Yes?
Yeah, Harry Livingston, uh, RISA member, ASIT member. Uh, I also agree with proposal one, and with, uh, bag limit of three fish throughout the whole year. I don't think, uh, October fifteenth to December thirty-first, we need five or four fish, three's fine.
Thanks. All right, I think we're gonna go to the Zoom.
Hi, on Zoom, James Manzo.
Yeah, um, James Manzo, RISA member, ASIT team, and, uh, in full support of proposal one. I mean, here, you know, talking about the fluke fishing and how tough it is, now is the time to protect. You guys have an epic, awesome blackfishing, um, fishery up there. I come and visit friends and family, or private charter, I buy my state license, and, um, I am all for, uh, taking care of this fishery. So, and again, proposal one, thank you.
Thanks.
Tom Lemare.
Hi, Tom Lemare, again, I agree with proposal one. And I also think that the bag limit should just stay at three for the whole year. Um, I just think it's, uh, better for the, uh, fishery, thank you.
Thanks.
Rick Bellavant.
Thank you, uh, Rick Bellavant, from the Rhode Island Party and Charter Boat Association. Uh, before I give my comments, I just have to ask the question. Um, I don't see status quo on this sheet as a, as an option, I'm assuming it is, but I just don't see it, so I was curious if, if that is an alternative.
Yes, status quo is always an option.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I strongly oppose proposal one, and I favor status quo. I've read through the stock assessment a couple of times, and it's a tremendous assessment. It's a good model, it shows that the spawning stock biomass is one point five times over the, uh, target, not too far away from where Black Sea Bass is, as a matter of fact. Um, the fishing mortality rate of point two-three is below the target there as well. So, with the current regulations that we have, we are not overfishing the stock. We've actually found a sweet spot. We have worked very hard over decades to bring this fishery back. We were the first ones to implement a possession limit in, uh, Rhode Island. We were the first ones to go to sixteen inches in Rhode Island. We were the first ones to drop the possession limit from ten fish to six fish, and then to five. We were the first ones to implement a spawning closure in June and July. All of those things were meant to rebuild the stock, and now we've done that. It's now our turn to take advantage of this fishery that we rebuilt. I think it's premature to, to be talking about more proactive measures at this time. We have an assessment every couple of years. The current regulations that we have are a sweet spot that satisfy all anglers in Rhode Island. And we should monitor it and keep an eye on it, keep them right where they are right now. I think, um, this is more about anglers that are mad that their out-of-state boats come into Rhode Island than anything else. And I don't think it's right that we, uh, penalize the charter for hire fleet in Rhode Island just because people are mad at them out-of-state boats. We rebuilt the fishery, it's a good thing. They're trying to rebuild theirs now, maybe they'll go back when theirs, when theirs rebuilds. But, like I said, there is nothing in the assessment that says that these, that this, these measures need to happen. I also think it's a little bit strange that these measures in general won't do anything to help. If you're a private angler with three people on your boat, you're allowed to take ten fish per day, and three of them are over twenty-one inches, exactly what they're doing now. So, there's no cut for the private anglers. The shore fishermen rarely catch four fish anyway, four, five fish, it's not gonna impact them, this is just gonna impact the charter for hire customers. I think if people were really concerned about the stock, they'd look at the May closure, close the month of May down. I think they would also put a, a lower possession limit, uh, boat limit on the private angling community, lower it to six or eight fish, they're that concerned about it. Ninety-five percent of the fish are harvested by private anglers and shore-based fishermen, five percent by for hire. In nineteen eighty, late eighties and nineties, we were taking one point five million pounds of fish out of the water in this stock. We're now down to five hundred thousand under the current regulations. There's literally no need to do anything else. We're good where we are, we found a happy spot, keep it the way it is, thank you.
Thanks.
Roger Teller.
This is Roger Teller, a, a recreational fisherman, and I vote for proposal number one at four fish.
Thanks.
Robert Taylor.
Yeah, Robert Taylor, uh, Newport Charter Captain. And, uh, I mean, I think I would kind of disagree with some of the things that Rick Bellavant said over there on that side of the fence, but, you know, as, as a younger charter captain, been in only for eight years now, I mean, I've seen the pressure increase about tenfold on tag, you know, and I think that as it is a slow-growing fish, you know, I'd like to preserve it because I'm in it more for the long haul, where some of those guys are kind of, they're on their back nine, I'm still on the front. And, uh, one of the problems, I think, a lot of times, I'd rather be proactive than reactionary. And, uh, I mean, just like a striped bass, they thought it was rebuilt, they went to two fish, and now we're back in the hole, and we have problems again. So, at least now, this is the one strong fishery we have. And I, quite frankly, by cutting sea bass, I don't know what, how that's, those chips are gonna fall. That's gonna put more lack of sea bass, I mean, what's left, now you got tag. So, I mean, at four fish, I don't think it affects the par- party or charter boat industry, because, I mean, literally, if, if they did, if your customers did their math, and they weighed their bag of fish fillets, if it's four fish or five fish, and they said, okay, well, how much did it cost me per pound, per fare? They would never go fishing again, they would literally be selling your charter business and have fish, which we can cultivate and grow native. I mean, for what I see is, I don't mind the out-of-state boats, and honestly, they're not a problem to me, of how I run my business. I think the other people, maybe their business, they're getting their asses kicked, because this don't market. So, kill an industry, have a bad attitude or no fish, so, I mean, I wanna keep the fish in case I have a bad attitude later on, so I'm gonna support proposal one.
Thanks.
John Wood.
Hi, as a recreational angler, I would love to see a, uh, that all the females go back, that's what I personally do on my boat, so I would support that in the future. I also am fine with three fish a day personally. Uh, speaking as president of Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers, um, our membership is trying to be proactive instead of reactive in protecting this fishery. Um, I second everything Rich Hittinger commented on earlier, and I support proposal one, thank you.
Thanks.
B.J. Sylvia.
Hello, uh, B.J. Sylvia, flipping out, finishing charters, and, uh, totally agree with Robbie Taylor. There's a reason why I, I never joined the Rhode Island Charter Boat Association, I feel like they're old school. Um, years ago, Rick is, Bellavant is, was right, they, guys meet fish. Now, with the technology change and rod and reels, guys will come fish for three fish. And if guys come to Rhode Island and they're throwing fish back all day and having a blast, um, having fun, and that's what my clients are doing, that's what Robbie's clients are doing, that's what Mike Littlefield's clients are doing, they're not coming here to meat fish anymore, those days are over. They're, in, in every state, they're over, so, um, I totally agree with, um, proposal one, and I'll keep it short, thank you.
Steve Miller.
Yes, hi, Steve Miller, uh, recreational angler and member of RISA. I support proposal one. Uh, I think it's an opportunity to proactively take measures to preserve the fishery while it is good. And I'll say it again, while it is good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Michael Hagan.
This is Michael Hagan, I'm in favor of proposal one.
Thanks.
T.J. Harris.
Hi, T.J. Harris, RISA member, Quinney County Striper Team Vice President. I would just like to echo what Captain B.J. Silva and Robbie Taylor said, that I, I really think that it's the right move, uh, supporting proposal one and be an aggressive, aggressively proactive. Uh, it's just, even three, three or four fish isn't gonna dissuade customers from coming up and fishing with out-of-state guys. I don't think it's gonna hurt anyone financially. Um, you know, what it's, the only thing it's gonna really do is help the fishery, which, you know, I mean, more and more guys are fishing for them, exponentially, every year, more new charter boats. Um, so we need to be proactive on this before we lose this incredibly special fishery that we have. Thank you.
Thanks.
Dave's iPhone.
Hi, Dave Guazoli, I'm recent member, recreational, private boat owner. Uh, full supporter of proposal one, I, I think it's great that we're being proactive, it is, I think I've Full supporter of proposal one. I think it's great that we're being proactive. It is, like I've echoed already, an amazing fishery. Certainly not opposed to seeing a three fish reduction at the end of the year. And not a lot said about the, the May season. I think one gentleman mentioned it. But even dropping that three fish down to two fish and give that fish maybe an extra time, the spawn before harvest should be, be great to see as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Paul Foss.
Yeah, I'm a recent member, small boat owner. I fully support proposal number one. We've got a great fishery. We need to protect it. Don't want to see it go the way of the fluke. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bill Sokolowski.
Hi, recreational fishermen. Proposal number one, three fish a day is fine with me and I never fish for the spring fish anyway. You know, I've been fishing out of Jamestown for 12 years now with a tug. And this year I saw something really unusual on November 10th out beyond Breton Reef, out near the Hootacan. Doing with three very large charter boats out there. One from New York City, one from Montauk, and one from Fairhaven, Mass. And the New York City boat was the biggest of the three. And he tossed out two lines at 45-degree angles and took up most of the reef. And I've never seen that before. And, you know, that can't be a good sign. Thank you.
Thanks.
Lawrence Adino.
Yeah, hi, Larry Adino, RISA Credit Island Striper Team. People talked about being on the back nine. Well, I'm probably on the last two or three holes. At 81 years of age, but I would still like to see us be more proactive. These fish are slow-growing. We can't wait for the fishery to collapse because if it does, it'll take forever for it to come back. So I definitely support proposal one and would also support a three fish a day limit for the entire season. Thank you.
Tom H.
Yes, Tom Hood here, Quinton Island Striper Team and RISA member, kayak angler. Fully support proposal one. Thank you.
Thanks.
Eric Jackham.
Hi, my name is Eric Jackham. I'm a member of RISA. I'm a recreational and fisherman and boat owner. I fully support proposal one. The sign shows that the fishing, that the fish grow slower. And preserving these fish for years to come, I'd like to be able to catch these fish when I'm real old. And right now I think we have a good fishery and I'd like to see it kept that way. Thank you.
Thanks.
Island Current.
Hi, my name is Chris Cullen, owner of the Island Current Fleet at a snug harbor. I am in favor of proposal number one. I feel that we are in a great position. As being on the boat, I see firsthand anglers from all over really understanding the conservation of this unique resource that we have up here in Rhode Island. Throwing double-digit fish back, not even taking the limit, but just being very conservative and understanding the great resource that we have. So definitely being proactive and supporting proposal one.
Thanks.
Fred DeFinnis.
Yes, Fred DeFinnis, recreational angler, RISA member, boat owner. I fully support proposal one. I want to echo what Greg Vesby said earlier, that this is a unique opportunity for us to get out ahead on the conservation issue rather than waiting until we have a problem. And we can't count on, you know, the same people that told us that the fluke fishery was in great shape to tell us about our tug fishery. We have to do it ourselves. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kenny Mendez.
Thank you. I'm a recreational angler, also a member of RISA, kayak fisherman, shore fisherman, and I have a boat too. I do believe you need to get ahead of this and preservation, conservation is important. So I support proposal one. And I remember when the striped bass fishery was quite good and nothing was wrong with it at the time, but now look where we are now. So I think we need to get ahead of it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Shane's iPhone.
Hi, Shane Kukawa, professional lobsterman. One thing I'm going to tell you this year, when I was out there watching everybody, it was, it was pretty disgusting from the outer fleets, from boats that weren't really around here. And I'm for proposal one. And I mean, look, the fluke is gone and we pretty much should be pretty much proactive and we can't rely on antiquated data anymore. But if we don't stop now, from what I'm telling you, what I've just seen through the year, this is going to be gone. So I'm for one.
Thanks.
Roman.
Hi, my name is Roman Dudas. I'm a recreational angler. I support proposal one. I believe that nobody really needs to take two or three fish over 21 inches. It's basically an ego trip for these people. And also I think whether you have three fish or five fish or four fish, people are going to come anyways just to try to catch their personal best. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Ryan Getta.
Ryan Getta, recreation fisherman here in Newport. As everyone's been saying, I mean, everybody saw the city of boats out there this season. And like a lot of these captains have like touched on, there's no reason to be keeping all these breeder fish. I mean, you're really out there for the sport. You're not out there to deplete the, the resource. So I'm in full support of proposal one.
Thanks.
Eric Thomas.
Yes, charter boat captain from Newport. I'm in proposal, proposal one is my choice as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Timothy Wardell.
Captain Tim Wardell here with Freedom Boat Club of Rhode Island. We've got 500 members. Almost half of them are fishermen. I support proposal one. Half of our club members are fishermen and would like to see this go on for years. So an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Proposal one. Thank you.
Thanks.
Carol Mallow.
Hi, Carol Mallow, recreational fisherman, RISA member. And I totally agree with proposal one. We, I believe it's critical that we do something now and be proactive. And I ditto all of the people who believe that too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Peter Obeso.
Yeah, I really appreciate the talk that Rich Bellevant gave with all the statistics and everything. And it shows that we've really done, really done a good job so far. And which means to me, now's the time to protect it as it is and not waste all that effort that everybody's made over these years. So I surely support proposal number one. It's the only way to go. Thank you.
Thanks.
Dustin S.
Hey, Dustin Stevens. I'm also in support of proposal number one. And just to add to that, I would say three fish per day for the entire year. That's it.
Thanks.
Richard Reich.
Hi, Richard Reich, recent member of Board of Directors. The life fish couple tournaments, the RISA Yearlong and the Snug Harbor Tournament. And the bigger fish, I see it going down already. You know, the numbers of fish are there, but the bigger fish. So I'm, I'm in proposal one would be my choice.
Thanks.
And iPhone.
Hi, John Rainville. I'm in support of us. Proposal number one. We need to protect our fish.
Do you mind restating your name, sir?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, just like, do you mind restating your name just so I can get it?
John Rainville, support proposal number one.
Thanks. That's it for the Zoom hands? Anyone here need one more chance?
Yes, I'm a retired RISA member and I'll fully support Fred's business early comments. They turned deep right in this fishery. I'll support.
Thanks.
Richard Chikowski, fishing vessel drifter. I'd like to see no change in the regulations. However, I do understand the importance of the industry and the fishery. And I've been in it again for, you know, quite a long time. Nobody wants to see it go anywhere. What, we have a, we have a stock that's been healthy for quite some time and more recruitment in it every year, it seems to be. I do agree with the pressure that's on these fish. But I also, just thinking about all the comments and listening. At three fish or, or, you know, whatever, whatever everybody's in favor of with this proposal one. What, what are you doing after you catch your three fish? I mean, if you're going to concentrate and sit there all day long because you've got nothing else to fish for, you don't want to go somewhere else to fish or something else. What about the, what about the mortality and the release and, and sitting on these things all day long? I'm just curious and if there's any thought on that end of it. I mean, if we've got a recovered fishery, and again, just like the sea bass, we're all enjoying a fishery that, you know, this doesn't seem to be a discrepancy. I guess if you guys want to catch your three fish, then catch your three fish and be happy with it. You don't want to catch a 21-inch fish? Don't catch a 21-inch fish. It doesn't really matter. I just don't see any reason to change anything when everything is, is at status quo here. I really don't. I, I don't understand what we're trying to get at. It just seems to be a wedge for division with the people that are in this room, the people that are, that want to be in the industry and enjoy the resource. I, you know, why change something? Why change something if something worked? I understand. I do understand. We don't want to lose anything. But I don't think you're going to find any person in this room, whether it's me or anybody else, that wants to see any of these fisheries gone. I, I just, I would find that hard to believe. But if you keep taking and chiseling away at these regulations, now you come down to, what, what's it going to be in three years? Okay, you guys, you've got your three fish. Everybody's happy with their three fish. You're letting these big fish go. That's fine and dandy. What happens when somebody else comes? The next generation comes and says, you know, let me think about this. We don't want to catch these three. We want one fish. And then what happens to one fish? One fish goes to no fish. Why doesn't everybody just think about things a little bit and, and be realistic about what the fishery is and what it's made for? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Want to go there?
Yeah, I think as part of, you know, a younger generation, I think it's important to preserve the fishery. And I think it's, you know, short-sighted to think that history doesn't repeat itself. And I've heard a few people mention the comment that, you know, that have lived longer than I have, that saw fisheries. And I'm, I'm new to the tug fishery and I'll, you know, put out there that I'm part of the popularity that's coming into this fishery and hammering on the fish. And once you figure out how to catch these fish, you can sit there on them all day and catch, you know, six, seven, eight, 10 pounders and bring them up. So I think lowering the amount of fish that we bring back, you know, and kill will keep the fishery healthy over time. So I just want to put that out there. Charlie Riley, member of RISA, kayak fisherman, also a member of the Quinton Island Striper Team.
Thanks. Yes.
Tom, we're a recent member. The only, we're not going to stop the boats from coming from out-of-state. They're going to come. This fishery is unbelievable. Our only chance to mitigate disaster is through this kind of action. And I would even take it a step further for those folks in law enforcement that, because what happened last year out there was, at times, you know, unbelievable. So there's that chance too, to make sure that the rules of the road are enforced and that the etiquette out there is, is, is proper. And, you know, guys aren't doing things they shouldn't do as far as the fishery goes and the behavior with other captains and other boats. But the real, the real thing is that those, those jokes about the back nine and the front nine and what this young man just said, it's preserving the fishery. We want this to last forever. The only way that it's going to last is if we take this action now. The second gentleman that spoke on the Zoom, some of the sentiments that this captain just, you know, espoused. They have, they have points there. I mean, we've worked hard. It is where it is. But it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see what's been going on, especially this past season. Because the word has spread. And, and it's up to you folks to make sure that, that this gets saved. And the only way it's going to happen is through this action. That's all I want to say.
Thanks. In the back.
So Dan Smith, I'll make an example. I would like to add, John, if I remember correctly, at, I believe it was this, this setup of meeting last year on Zoom, I had mentioned that a deep-water release tool. When fishing is over a certain depth through, to reduce the amount of mortality. I'm not saying a venting tool. I'm saying a deep-water release tool. Sequalizer is a great, not to mention any brands in particular, but it's a great tool. I use it on my boat. It gets a little hectic at times. I'm not going to say a thousand. But particularly with the big fish in deeper water, it greatly reduces mortality. And after our three fish limit is built, a lot of us guys are playing just catch and release. So the name of the game is to have that mortality be as low as possible. I would also like to say that I am one of the younger guys out there. So, you know, I took the big step this year. I stepped out on my own. I bought my own boat this year. I've been running somebody else's for the last three. So I made, I made my choice. My choice is, is to see this fishery go on as long as possible.
Thanks. Patrick Vengis.
Commercial fisherman. I go with, for Rick and Rick said, you know, it's not broken. Don't fix it. I don't see how enforcement, you're going to have a nightmare trying to have these bag size, this size and that size. And the out-of-state boats, what's other states doing? I'm like, well, current saying, because when a guy saw them off, when a guy saw the block, I don't fish on tug. He just zipped over the monblock or he zipped back over that fairhaven, as I said before. Are other states going to be comparable size? That's not good. Where can yourself kind of dismantle in another state? Doesn't have that. It's the, another state, you all can, they can sit there and catch all their trophy fish as long as they get it. It's enforcement, but let's be real, I mean, they can't be out there 24/7 controlling. That's all I would say.
Thanks.
Do you do this all you want to, but the reality is without enforcement present, it's not going to matter what you do. People and people, maybe the swim badge and that, and that's the end of the story. All this talk about saving the fishery and everything else, I mean, I'm glad you guys finally saw it before for what it's been like in South County these years. Again, we're the Wild West out there. We've had New York folks literally anchored on half a true point, just hammering fish nonstop. Enforcement, nowhere to be back. This happens all the time. Without enforcement, it's not going to change. I will give Chris a lot of credit though, the outcome and the amount of people they have here. But in future reference, if you just were like a hand raise option, like supporter vision, then who's supposed to pose that? I wasn't. Dan had a meeting. Dan, I'm not trying to encourage him, but wow. I get it. It's a poor work fish. I worked at John Shelley, you don't have to do a huge, huge report of these fish. It was absolutely nutsful, you know, aside from just generally insane. But, you know, and I understand to be proactive, not reactive and everything else. But on the same point, every New York boat, you go on their Facebook page, why don't say why? 98% of New York charter boats, you go on their Facebook page and all you see is huge fish over and it's cool as being thrown off immediately back to dock. Because there's no enforcement. There's no law. Patrick brought up Southwest ledge earlier. Everybody fishes over the line. It's like, no big deal. Oh, all of a sudden they got caught up with. Sequelizer tool? Yeah, they're great, but they're expensive. These guys that are doing the most damage aren't going to care what that chart says or what the law says. Because they're going to take their 70, 10, 12 fish, their four, five, six cool as a fish, go back to New York. And they're going to, if there's enforcement on the dock, they're going to throw it away. They have to, oh, we can't control what our customers do. And they give away stock first. I've been watching it for two years. No enforcement. It doesn't matter what it says. It's all right.
Thanks. Frank.
Yeah, it's like your friend fell asleep. Um, few things here. I've been doing this as long as probably anybody. Especially on my side. And we talked about seeing out of state boats. They were always here. What has changed is there's more in-state boats that see them. Granted, we have a couple of boats that are docked in Rhode Island now. But if anybody goes back, I mean, George Allen used to fish south of, you know, on Bretton Reef. And the Viking fleet used to be over here with the Viking starship, 154, he'd be fishing, you know, a little farther to the west. There were very few people that were watching what we were doing. We've been doing it for years and years and years. Uh, Rhode Island was the first state to take uh reductions that we needed. Uh, when we went up. Now we are in a region with Massachusetts. Two years ago, to help Massachusetts out, Rhode Island took a cut in the bag limit and went from six to five fish. So Massachusetts could go up. Massachusetts agreed to go to 100% reporting for party and charter boats. And they agreed to a spawning closure. Neither of which they did. But Rhode Island took the reduction. So Massachusetts could get so we are in a region with them now. And I would say as a fishery, that as Rick said, that is, you know, above the biomass target. It's not overfished and overfishing is not occurring. Massachusetts is not going to be taking any type of reductions. Or I'd be shocked. Um, the other thing we talked about, another thing with out of state boats. Okay, there's a couple of party boats now that are docked in Rhode Island. There's no doubt about that. Has anybody gone down the escape road on a weekend and looked at the license plates? They're not in state boats. They're all out of state boats too. And when I look at proposal number one here, I don't see anything in there. I mean, you're over 21 inch. I'm not even going to comment on. But when you go to the bag limit, that is not going to affect a single boat that is fishing, that is trailing their boat or fishing out. That has absolutely nothing to do because it's still a 10 fish limit. There's three guys in the boat. It's going to be 10 fish that are caught on that boat. So that reduction, it's 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 just not doing anything. And if we want to look at the data, yeah, it is increasing. I'm a data person. I look at it all the time. If you look at the shore private boat combined, well, let's just start with the shore angles. In the last three years, there's been a 47% increase over the five-year average of what shore angles are landing on top. If you add in this year without wave six, which is November and December, it's up over 100%. If you want to combine the shore angles with private rental boats, the five-year average is up 10%. Okay, now, if you want to go into this year without adding wave six, because it's not out yet, it won't be out until next week. Wave six is already 100, I mean, through wave five, we're at 110% of what the private recs have landed for the last five years over the average. If you take um a proxy of wave six and add it in, it's going to bring private rec catch up to I think it's 140%. It's going to be over 700,000 fish. People are going to argue that number's too high. But we also talked about the city of uh boats that are out there. One day, just a rough count, there was 130 boats fishing south of Bretton Reef. Right? Now, people are going to say the four higher catch is too low. I've said that for years, and I'll stand by that here too. But when you take in for the last few years, they did not take into account the out of state boats. We're starting to catch them now in uh in the MREDA data. So I go to proxy again for wave six for this year. The four higher fleet will be at about 25% increase over what it has been for the last five-year average. Where the private recreational boats are up at 110%. Proposal number one is going to do absolutely nothing for that 110% increase. We're at 700,000 fish from an average that was around uh 142,000. So if anybody thinks that we're saving the fish by proposal number one, it's not going to happen. It's just not going to do it. You still have a 10 fish limit. You're still going to have every out of state boat. We just had an out of state party boat. You're not here and say four fish is not going to stop him from coming. But I I don't see a stock that is rebuilt over fishing is not occurring. It's not overfished. We rebuilt the stock. And I sat for a manager on the other side of the table for 25 years. And all we heard from people was all you do is take, 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 take. When do we ever get something back? Here's a situation where we're going to keep taking and not get anything back rebuilding the fishery. Thank you. Status quo.
Thanks. All right, we're going to go to the Zoom and then we'll move on.
No, we did the show.
They've got two more. We gave it that's what I was going to say.
Thanks, guys.
Tim's iPhone.
Yeah, you doing? Uh, Tim Taranova. Status quo. I couldn't agree with the captain of the drifter more. That's it.
Thanks.
And Shane's iPhone.
Okay, to the gentleman that says, what happens after we catch three fish? We catch a whole bunch more because they're still there. So what, these people are coming from out of state and they're not respecting our waters where our captains, if you look around that room tonight, there's a lot of really good captains there that respect their waters. They put the fish back that are big. They continue our life. These guys are coming. And again, I'm a lobsterman. I'm not even in like, they're, I'm watching them wipe out reefs. They're just wiping out reefs. So I mean, I mean, yeah, we rebuilt the stock, but we got to keep it flowing.
Thanks. All right, so let's move on to proposal two, which was also an industry proposal regarding the party and charter possession limit. This proposal uh would have a maximum vessel limit for party and charter uh boats to be determined by multiplying the total number of anglers or spearfishers on board by the daily possession limit and then divide by two. Uh, any comments on this proposal?
Anything on Zoom?
Hold on, we're Josiah. More question. So number possession limit, seven, 10 fish per boat. However, many people are on the boat. By multiply the bag limit by the
That's what they proposed, yeah.
So if there's 60 people on a boat, three fish a day, it's 100 fish, so 75 fish total.
I didn't propose it. I I'm not going to so I don't like that. It just seems weird. Thanks. In the back.
Uh, Dan Smith, old McDaniel. Completely against it. Doesn't make enough sense. Can be hard to enforce.
Thanks. See a hand on the Zoom?
Hi, Rick Bellavent for the Island Party and Charter Boat Association. I oppose this proposal.
Thanks.
He's a Matt Gox, Laura Hansel C. I oppose proposal two as well.
Thanks.
Danny Dylan, persuader. Charles, I also oppose proposal two.
Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. In the back. Thanks.
All right, see no other hands. Let's move on to the next. Uh, we're moving on to commercial management for to talk. We have uh two industry proposals here. The first one is proposing a slot limit for commercial to talk between 15 and 19 inches. The second proposal is uh proposing a uh higher bag limit in the spring period accompanied by closed dates. Any comments on commercial?
Great.
Patrick. Status quo isn't up.
Thanks.
Got your shirt.
Mike Gock, William Commercial. Status quo.
Thank you. Like we're going to do this.
Yeah. Go this way. No, no, maybe. Thanks. In the back.
But uh this proposal two was a little bit, and we would get the 25 fish. We're in the fall, and well, I would probably see favor in that. But until then, I stay back for
Thanks, sir.
Steve Petkowski, commercial fisherman. Proposal one essentially limits us to $100 a trip. Not worth the fuel to go and chase them. Uh, proposal two, why are we hammering them really hard in the spawning season? So I would support status quo.
Thanks.
Sir, Robert Stewart, commercial fisherman. Ice sports.
Thanks.
All right, we'll go to Zoom. Gary Mataronis.
Yeah, I support status quo on this also.
Thanks.
And Josh Sores.
Hi, yes, I'm a commercial fisherman. I propose, uh, I mean, I support proposal two. Just makes it a little more profitable and a little more green. I have to run my boat seven days a week for it. Thanks.
Thanks.
Chris Lott.
Uh, yeah, I would support status quo on this one as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Go back to the audience. Any other comments? All right, seen none on Zoom.
Ken Margot.
Hi, guys. Sorry, I lost the meeting for a second there. Um, I support proposal two for the same reason Josh had. Um, 10 fish a day isn't really worth untying the boat in terms of like long-term wear and tear and maintenance. It's not like a day's fishing. I think the 25 a day makes it a lot more worthwhile. Um, and I don't, I would, in terms of proposal one, I would support a slot limit, but only if we saw an increase in possession limit so we can see about the same poundage for a limit not going down because it's kind of like the opposite of what we were just talking about proposal two, making it more, you know, more of a day's pay worthwhile to go out for. So for that reason, I would not for in in lieu, i- if proposal two isn't an option, I'd rather have status quo than proposal one, I guess is how I'd like to word it. So, thank you.
Thanks. All right, any other comments from the audience?
Oh, sorry. So proposal two, 25 fish a day, maybe 50 tags. So it's two days and then you have to go on the rest of the class. Sounds awesome. Sorry, sorry, I have to say. She can get deep at 25 times a time. Yeah, well, that's just what I'm saying. Like, we don't, some of us don't have like super high numbers. It's the whole history tobacco and then our environmental management and licensing. So we get like 25 tags a day. It's like a day off, we get dashed.
Thanks. Patrick.
Just a quick question. The second one, I suppose, ask, oh, it's only open one day. Wednesday, Friday.
It would be open, yeah. Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
It's not 25 a week. So specific days are only
That's great.
Yeah, that might be pretty common.
And if you don't want them on seven.
That's pretty confident.
Right?
Right, that's it.
Uh, Ken, we'll go back to Zoom.
A quick clarifying question. Is is status quo right now, does it have the same quota allocation as we're looking at for proposal one and proposal two?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Sounds good. I uh I support staying at these quota allocations. One thing that I haven't enjoyed about this process, which thankfully we didn't get into this year, was reallocating the quota every year. Think keeping the spring and the fall even uh keeps things fair between bay fishermen and fishermen in the southern half of the state. So, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Thanks. All right, well, I think we can move on to the next item.
And this is, uh, so this is just a division proposal. Uh, as you're aware, the commercial fish need to be tagged. We are striking that they have to be tagged at the time of harvest. Uh, only they have to be tagged prior to offload. Any comments on this proposal, Josiah?
I fully support this. Trying to tag the water while you're falling and doing everything, that's stupid. This is brilliant.
Thanks. Sir?
What do they define as offloading? Is that once they're off the boat?
Once you're tied up and removing the fish from the boat to the shore.
So I trailer. If I slide it onto the trailer, fish stay on the boat till I hit the deal.
Once that trailer leaps the water, you're offloaded.
Okay.
Yes, in the back.
Uh, I guess I would support this proposal that we tag unless you have the direction to get in. I don't know if this will replace this, but I would bring up, I still don't know why we're having fishermen tag also. But anyway, in in the meantime, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks. Do you mind just restating your name? Thanks, Derek. And I can tell you it's part of the FND. That's why we have fishermen tag, so. Um, any other comments on this one, Patrick?
Well, yeah, we've got a tag to end the day. Is there any way maybe that we could set up something so we've got to do electronic logbook? And get into the numbers that have to be paper turned out? You know, because it seems like I ended up losing that piece of paper and writing down about four or five times. You know, let's go green.
Thank you. Um.
All right, we'll go to the Zoom. Chris Lott.
Hi, uh, yeah, I'd support this. Thanks.
Thanks.
Gary Mataronis.
I support this proposal. It's pretty hard to tag a fish when it comes over the rail.
Thanks.
And Ken Margot.
Uh, Ken Margot, commercial fisherman. I support this proposal. It, you know, makes the process on the boat a little bit easier. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so I think we can move on. Okay, so the next item up for comment is our aggregate program for summer flounder and black sea bass. I'm not going to go into the details of the program. It's all in the public notice. However, we are, and you also find a guidance document in the public notice, which really tries to hone in on the specific parts of this proposal. It is, it has a lot of moving parts. Uh, the way I'm going to break it down for you tonight is we have three slides basically to kind of steer where we're looking for comments. And uh, I just want to reiterate, comments aren't due until the 25th. If you'd like to come in and talk to the staff about this to form your comment, feel free, but also feel free to make your comments. Uh, so uh, So, first off, so this is for our pilot program, so the pilot has expired. Right now, we're in the position to decide whether or not we should adopt the program as new rule, continue the program as a pilot program, or to allow it to remain expired, meaning to kill the program. Next one, so, if we are keeping it as a pilot, should we amend our eligibility criteria to prioritize past participants? And use a lottery to, as needed, to add additional, or to have no prioritization for past participants? If we do continue as a pilot, do we want to increase the number of participants from, from six, which is where we are at now for gear category, to 10 or 12? Meaning going from 36 potential participants to 60 or 72? And if so, or another consideration might be just to eliminate our gear categories entirely, and go to 54 available permits. Furthermore, if this continues as a pilot, should we require that a summer flounder exemption certificate be required to land 200 pounds a day? And if it continues as a pilot, extend the term of the program for one or two years. Next slide, so if we were to adopt this as a full-fledged program, a new rule, again, should this summer flounder exemption certificate be required to land greater than 200 pounds a day? Right now, program participants are exempt from that requirement. Should we, should we have it such that a captain must make a choice to either participate in winter one or this summer fall potential aggregate program? For black sea bass, should we include it in the program? If so, what should the seasons be, should it be the same as fluke, May through December 31st? Should it be closed in the spring and summer and only open from September 16th onward? Or should it be open in the early seasons from May to June? And then closed in the midsummer and then back open in the fall? And then the final consideration for a full program would be, should the possession limit be equal to five, six, or seven days? Patrick.
Start on the blue one. Look at the participants that are, start on the blue one, I think they should keep the programs on, I'm in it. It worked very well, you know, I think it should be available, should we, should they put some more users in, absolutely. You can go back a page, the first, whatever, six, 10, 12, hopefully we can offer to everybody. Rules and regulations that are in it, they should stay. Part that I do not agree with is the summer fluke exemption certificate, using it in the summer with the pilot program, but most of the people that have fluke exemptions right now are all catching fluke right now. They're all fishing right now using the winter, using the fluke exemption during the winter period. They cannot use it in the summer period, because the state doesn't offer anymore. Cannot use the fluke exemption in the summer, you to keep a weekly limit as a user. To go over 200 pounds, we're getting fluke increases all the time, all summer long, all, all we heard all tonight is a low limit of fluke, there's not any fluke around. Says fluke, there's fluke around, you gotta work for them a little bit. The 200, it was 100 pounds all day, so really, any participant that's going with this, if they don't have a fluke exemption, they're gonna be bound by a two-day possession limit at 100 pounds right now. Now, we've seen the fluke on the order three, four, five hundred. All last season, and I expect to do the same thing this year, because we're getting another increase of fluke. And if these people can't catch them, the broad reels are having a difficult time catching them, and there's not as many being landed, I don't see 200, I see the 200 pounds, yeah. And she goes, get rid of that, the fluke exemption should be used still in winter, in winter, get rid of it from summer period. And should it be extended? I would say 2023, I would say for the rest of the, rest of the life, but, you know, if we gotta run the pilot program, it's not offered to everybody. Certificate required, got that out, should the participants choose, someone wanted to, absolutely. Want to go on the winter and catch a fluke, have it be in the aggregate program, knock his socks off. In the summer, the guys that are inshore fishermen, participating in a weekly limit, catch a fish while they're here. It's very, it's not gonna be as many people as you think are gonna jump into this thing, because it's like a day dragger who's catching squid. He is bound, he cannot have all the 100 pounds of fluke on his vessel, unless he has a six-inch net. Five and four, a six-inch, a six-inch net through the whole thing. That means that I'm gonna go squid fishing for the day to keep the fluke, which most of guys, right now, you know, squid, squid fishing is big. The fluke is a little icing on the cake, so I don't see a lot of guy, I don't see a lot of people jumping into this. And obviously, you don't want to be broad real guys, they can't even catch, they daily, they can't catch them. So I don't see all the participants, I see a handful of people that could actually make this work on the fluke. I mean, I will, I would support running the program again, keeping the same participants, so you still have data, because that's what we're trying to do with keep on data, 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 to improve the history, to improve the history. And I added up my poundage this year, and I was actually up, like, 2,500 pounds less fluke I brought being in the program. So, I mean, if it's less than, you need a fluke exemption to participate in this and then want 200 pounds, I'd just be out, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even participate myself. But sea bass, it should just be, just like how, the same way as it's been the last couple of years. I support a seven-day limit. Not seven days, six days. Five days is right on the brink of point, people not participating in it, because now you're losing two full days of fish. So it's 50 pounds a day, it was 50 times, 50 pounds a day times seven, 350 bucks, 350 pounds to save God, five, but to save stock 1,500 bucks. So maybe, make it $200 a day on the sea bass, you make 1,400 bucks. Now you get down, and now you stop taking $200 off, you get $1,000 a day, people aren't gonna stop doing it. Now, people are just gonna say, well, let's do the daily possession limit, if it's less than, less than six, so I, I like to adopt seven days a week for sea bass. And for fluke exemption, that be removed from the program, that you can rent a weekly limit, that it's 100 pounds, times seven, 700 pounds, and it's unfair, thank you.
Next, Patrick.
Amend eligibility criteria. I don't see needing a lottery or anything, or continuing as a pilot. There'll be a lot of that feedback. There's people I have no interest in, there's people that do have interest in. So, the number of available, global principle category, or entirely, I think it should be left to the person, this fisher's choice. If they want to become part, you know, have access to this aggregate system, and go do it. All the rules are great, it's awesome, fisher will have to do. Aggregates make a huge difference for a lot of people, I'm one of them, shit. Summer flounder exemption certificate. Have we figured out how many of them are actually real in the state or not? Affordable to a small boat bag, that's not gonna go, 60 pounds of water right now, Jason, that's a win, it's always been a win thing, and it's a big vote, it should stay. Why are we gonna be penalized for doing what we've been doing and playing by the rules with the aggregate? So, now we need this exemption certificate, not, most of us can't pull, a small boat, for the aggregate, it's just a thing. And now we can't land with 200 pounds of fluke a day, so 700 pounds, you gotta get three and a half days. Still sketchy weather, everything else, it, it just penalizing people to play by the rules. But if they're probably extending it through at least 2022 or 2023, I agree, that should just be On the next page, again, the exemption certificate, that's usually due winter, you go offshore and all these guys, you know, you go from Mass to North Carolina, Virginia, Jersey, Rhode Island, and just doing the big aggregate thing, it's for their exemption certificates. Because they all have a circuit that kind of follow, and you can kill them in one month. And a lot of them, some of them have been doing it for years, so, let them keep doing it, why do they need to do it in the summer? They don't, they did it all winter, that was their choice. Black sea bass, that should just be the way it's been, right straight through from open to close, seven days when you can pull it. You've even sent out emails, you know, appreciate it, you guys, running the aggregate most of the time. Well, DM sends out a message to the aggregate certificate holders, and Patrick's got them, I've got them. Hey, we're closing the quota early, so, instead of a seven-day limit this week, it's only gonna be five, because the closes on this day, blah, blah. In this day and age of technology, it's hard to believe that you can't communicate between management and harvest day that efficiently, knowing the closures. The number of people that are involved in the aggregate program, I don't think it's a huge impact for that reason. If I go out on Monday, I bring 250 pounds of sea bass, and we know it's closing on that Friday, and I'm gonna lose those two days, you say, hey, we'll catch them. It's done over, you know? So I don't understand why our possession limits would go down to five days or six days. It's kind of, again, penalizing us with most restricted. You have the AMS, you have the daily reporting, that we have to do, all the dialogue, the cleanings early. So, why do we get penalized for being part of the program? Trying to show, hey, this can actually work out, but then, oh, we're gonna lose one or two days a week. Years ago, all the guys up in the bay, they're out, they're like, okay, I'm looking every day, oh, we'll catch more, we'll catch more of that, yeah. Again, guys are trying to show, again, you know, 70, 700 pounds, I'll go and catch it whenever I want. Take the SS minnow out, go haul our nets, and somebody's got four, and somebody's got one. You know, somebody's nothing, so it worked out. This is kind of the same group, so why penalize us? As far as opening up, I think it should be, if somebody wants to get logged in, it should be whatever, as long as we follow all the regulations, the rules, type in it. If it's a state pilot, you're gonna expand it, or at least double the entry rate, chat it. So they can actually, I've heard people specifically come up to me, oh, that's, I have that. You have a chance to sign up, you have a license along with, and I have. I, I actually asked you to decrease the, the period of time for requirement, so I could join this program. So, and that person's after me, so why didn't you join? Can you join any type of one? And it just seems to be like, everybody's got a reason, it sounds great, so you have to do it. So I think, at least doubling, and you have to do the pilot program, keep it the way it's working, let us land a sea bass all through the season, the way we have fluke. No summer flounder exemption certificate for that, for pre-existing, Rhode Island ones, every buckle. I really want nothing to do with that, and honestly, I can't afford one, so, if that were to become a thing, I would, I would opt out of it.
Thanks. Any other picture?
Robert Stewart, I'm currently participating in this. I, not everyone else need to go to the first slide. I think everybody should be able to join, whoever wants to, as they were saying, I don't think many people will, because there, there's an investment. You know, and you put a tracker on your boat, which, I know, a lot of people probably don't want trackers on boats. So, I think that will hold a lot of people back from participating in it. The fluke, I can't tell you much about the fluke, I only participated in the sea bass, I, fish pot sea bass, that's what I did. And I lobstered. For me, it worked out perfect, I lobstered three days a week, I get my sea bass one day, go out one day, with all traps on my boat, they're all singles. Get my equipment in one day, maybe once, it took me two days to do it. Put them all back on boat, leave them on bulkhead till the following week, which I, I loved. And I believe with the way the whale stuff's happening, that's, you know, they're probably gonna start saying, you know, get the up and down lines out of the water. So that was a, that was a positive, and, can see the other, yep. The, the set, the daily limit, stay at seven days, I don't see why you knock it down at all, you know, even playing deal like they're saying all week today. And keep it open, made through December.
Thanks, Derek. Derek Pascal, I was also in a pilot program the last couple of years. I can really only speak about the black sea bass as well, I don't really catch fluke, I fish pot sea bass and lobster. But I would be in favor of if they were, you know, either extending the pilot program for a couple more years, or if it was gonna actually be adopted. You know, on the other side, if you go back to the next slide. There's a few things I'd be against on here. Anything less than seven days, or, you know, losing that sub-period in summer. I mean, I think the whole idea of the pilot, of, of the aggregate program being a pilot was to, you know, give us an advantage to capitalize on as much as we could. And if you, and the pilot program adopted and start putting this stuff in, well, that's, that's, if you use any of the data from the pilot program, now this is all different, now you have less days, it's summer, so you know, it, it worked great for me, I'm in favor of it, I, I understand approaching it with caution, not just letting, you know, be open up to everybody, being afraid of tons of participants, but I, I truly, like it's been said before, I don't think that's gonna happen, because it is an investment. So, it would be helpful to see how many people would be interested. But anyway, I guess I'll leave it with, I'd be in favor of extending the pilot program and adding, adding the maximum 72 available permits, because that'll get us that much closer to what it would actually be like if there was that open to everybody, the more that you get data, um, closer it is to being adopted, I guess, but I'd be in favor of extending the program as it is, and not losing any days or some periods.
Thanks.
John, I already, I already submitted a written do you need me to support or?
You read the comments fine, but feel free to speak.
Well, I just, I'm in support of the aggregate program, and that'll, in my written comment, will suffice. You're not, you're not really, are you gonna, are you, you know, taking note of what's being commented on? Here as far as changes to or adding on to the, to the program as it is at this meeting, or are you just for or against the, the aggregate program?
No, these comments are just like a written comment.
Oh, they are?
Yep, so, yeah.
Well, I think the, the, I think it really works, it's, uh, it works in other parts of the country, works here at Rhode Island, it, safety, safety's a big thing, I can see. Also economically, I think it's a huge, it's a huge thing, because if you, if, the day you choose to land your fish, it's, as long as, I've been, I've been at a point for over 50 years. And so, the, the day you choose to land your fish, it can make the difference between a, a big week or, or a light week, so, it's, uh, that's, uh, as far as the, the days, well, I hear a seven, seven seems to be the Well, I hear a seven, seven seems to be the, the rule that everybody wants to go by, seven. And that, that was the other question I, I was wanting is seven times fifty or five times fifty? What is the seven times what? Times?
Times whatever the daily.
Okay. So what if the state goes to a hundred pounds a day? So it'll be, then seven hundred pounds for the week. The aggregate. That's the same for sea bass?
Correct. They both run the same.
Okay, so it seems like a, this, it's all positives. I mean, it really is. It's all positive. It gives you, it gives you an opportunity to work at something else if you have a mind to, you know, you want to, you want to do another fishery. Say I covehog, so I, I could covehog or I could do, I could do something, something other than fish or, or I could take another, go to another fishery. It's or spend more time with my family. Do, do other things that is as opposed, now you, you're all young men. You're young men. I'm an old, I'm an old guy. But I wish I had spent more time with my family. Wish I would have. Instead of sacrificing all my whole life to the fishing industry, I wish I would have had a situation like this where I could go, I could go fishing a few days and spend the rest of the day, the rest of the week with my family or do, do things in, in that, in that regard. So that's, that's just important to me. It's not, not a big thing for anybody else, but that's, and I also, I, I trust that. But whether that's going to be, that's not really. As far as how it helped the fisheries. I think it's going to be whatever it's, it's going to be. There's no, the conservation of it is going to be I think Patrick made the point there is less, less effort or the landings on the fluke are, are not what they used to be. So maybe that won't be something that we'll see appreciatively make any difference on the, on the fluke because it's just not the landings anymore. But I guess I, I said my, my piece and, and I really, to reiterate, I truly, I totally support this aggregate program in whatever days and it takes to accomplish the, the you know, the, the amount of that needs, you know, that's, that's a good point. The amount of days that required to, to make you happy with the, with the days paid. You know, will you be happy with five days? Will you be happy with six days? It is all up to the individual. To on that point, you know, you, you need seven days of landings. The equivalent of seven days landings to make a, a day's pay or can you be happy with five days landing? And would it be equally as, as happy? Well, that's kind of all the individual. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
No problem. Do you mind just restate your name?
I'm Mike Monforti.
Perfect, thanks. I see you guys, but we got a few guys on Zoom that haven't had a chance to speak and I'm going to come back here, okay?
All right, on Zoom, let's put up Chris Lottz.
Hi, Chris Lottz. I'm a commercial fisherman. I also work for Lotso's, commercial fish dealer. I would say I'm totally for extending this program and I would say make it permanent, but uh, hold on, let me look at the paper so I can actually see what I'm talking about. And I also agree, it has to be seven days a week. There's five days a week. It just, it doesn't make sense. It's not economical. But um, all right, let's see. Continue as pilot program, yes. Did you have to designate for winter or summer flounder? I think you should have to designate this one. Uh, the daily limits, yeah, seven days. I think that anyone would agree that the, the save on expenses like gas, like someone said previously, you'd really like to get your limit in one or two days if that's, that's where you're aiming at to get the rest of the week either off or the rest of the week to do other things. I just think it's a great program for that because I mean, there's only so much time, right? Should we increase it? Um, should we prioritize? I think we should prioritize people. I think we should increase it. Term of program through twenty twenty-three, yes, I agree with that. The seasons, I don't really need to comment on that, but yeah, I think overall it's a really good program. I think it's good for fishermen. And like everyone said, if you don't want to participate, don't participate. Obviously, there's a pretty big buy-in to do it, but for those of us who are serious about fishing, we do this for a living. The expense of gas every day at fifty pounds of fish is really tough. It can make you have to stay at home. It can make you not make a pay. So I think this is a really important program and I think it's one of the best programs that's come since I've been around. Since I'm a young guy, I think this is very, very important to preserve this sea bass that we have now and to be able to make it functional and to make it a real job that we can make money on. And then if we do catch our limit, we can go and focus on other things and make money in other ways because like you say, I mean, look at how many people are doing it. It's, there's not many of us left, you know? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next we'll go to Ken Mergo.
Hi, thank you. Ken Mergo. I'm a full-time fixed gear fisherman as I don't drag, I don't drag otter trawls and I don't have a gill net permit. So I don't really interact with fluke. So I'm going to focus on the sea bass portion of this program. Um, the first thing I want to talk to was about the season. So when we proposed this program, the goals were increased efficiency for fishermen, increased safety with less trips, less fishing bad weather and reduced discards. Well, we, as a fixed gear fisherman, twenty years ago, you would have called me a lobster man. Nowadays, that's not really a full-time living. We've diversified. We fish lobster, crabs, fish, sea bass, scup, the talk, you know, the fish that pop. So you have your inshore lobster run, height of that's from June through August, also coincides with the height of the sea bass biomass being inshore. Without having the aggregate open during that time, I don't think it achieves the goals that we set out to achieve. Having it open in September through December, it actually almost does the opposite in my opinion. I mean, the fish are inshore in December, but as you get towards December, the fish are moving offshore. You're incentivizing fishermen to chase them out further in the poor weather in November and December. I think that if we're going to stick to that season, we're almost better off just leaving sea bass out of it. I do understand the caution in not over harvesting sea bass. So we end up with closures. One thing I have supported for years in this process is trying to keep the sea bass fishery open throughout the entire summer when we have that biomass inshore. I know with that in mind, I know this kind of goes against what I'm going to say, but with possession limit, I also agree it has to be seven, uh, seven days a week. I'm thirty-two years old. I've pretty much invested everything I have in building my business to make it a full-time business so I can be a full-time fisherman and not have to do something else. So I need to fish six or seven days a week, especially in the summer. Um, one compromise I came up with, I don't know what everybody else thinks about this. This would work for me if you did a maximum daily limit of four times, four times a day limit for the aggregate program with a weekly limit of seven times. So you could go out in two trips a week. Or if you caught the four or five times in one day, you'd still have two days worth of fish. So maybe like when I go lobster in the next day, I can keep the sea bass that come up as bycatch and not have to retain them. Again, circling back to not wanting to beat the quota too fast. You know, me saying that we need to open up the sea bass for longer and have a higher aggregate limit, maybe it's best to continue it as a pilot for the time being instead of going into a permanent program, just to make sure we don't use the quota up, um, too fast. And I think that, that's just about everything. But I think it's very important for the fixed gear fishery to have it open for more of the summer versus just September fifteenth onward.
Thanks.
Gary Matteronus?
Yeah, I'm going to make a couple of comments here and then I'd like to go back to the first slide if I could. First of all, on the aggregate program, it makes it much easier, you know? I just heard a young man thirty-two. Well, I'm over twice his age, so for us, us older guys, we get kind of beat up on that rough weather. So we can fish on the calm days. I do fish by myself. I fish ten pot trawls. So the less time I spend on the water, the safer it is for me. And when I fish my aggregate limit, I use much less fuel and bait and I don't have as many discards. So it's just a safer and more economically viable way to fish for me. And if people are worried about us over exceeding our limit, then we have trackers on us. So the DM offices know where we are all the time. If they want to come down and check us, they can come down and check us. So for me, it's just a much safer economical way. I don't have as many discards. So those are the comments I wanted to make. We go back to the first page here. I think to prioritize past participants that were the uh, people that you know, participated in this to see how it was going to go, should have a, um, we should get prioritized. I do think it should be open to more people. Everybody wants to get into it. I know a lot of people don't like to have trackers on their boats for some reason. But I think it should be open up to as many people as possible. As far as summer flounder exemption certificate, you know, I've gill net for quite a few years. I never thought it was fair for this other people to go out, catch two hundred pounds of summer flounder when I was limited to fifty pounds fishing right next to them. So I'm not in favor of that. If we go to the next slide, please. So as far as black sea bass, I mean, I think it's a good program. I think it's helped a lot of people. I think everybody knows fuel is going up again now. Clambellies that we use for bait are almost non-existent these days. Um, I think it should be open from May first through December thirty-first. And I, you know, I don't want to have to go out, try to catch three hundred fifty pounds a day. If I could break up the seven days into two days, catch a hundred seventy-five pounds one day, let's get fish another day or two and then go out to the other seventy, hundred seventy-five pounds. I think that's, I think that's appropriate. I think it'd be better for the resource. We'll be throwing so many fish overboard. So those are my comments and I appreciate you listening to them.
Thanks.
All right, I'm Dave Porter. You're unmuted, Dave. But we can't hear.
We're not hearing anything. Think he might be having some audio problems there.
It looks like he might be muted on your end, Dave.
We can come back. Anyone in the audience have further comment? Patrick?
Oh yeah, so I'll go back and you know, you ran into this when you put the, you've got to hook more participants in and it's like gear type. I know you, I know we said before that, you didn't even, when I went out for a call again, there's some gear types that you can even have enough participants even on all the gear types are maximized already. So I get rid of the gear type thing because this should be participants, you know, and and that was one of the big ones I wanted to say that, you know, it doesn't really matter what gear type. If we're going to keep the data going, adding more people to the program and you start changing what we rule, your little rat, little like history chart won't really be working the same as it would if it was a hell of a spread.
Thanks. Does that?
Like Patrick said, I know you had a hard time on twelve, you know, with participation.
And the biggest thing of you. Patrick thought, well, the biggest thing is the same thing I was talking, that I'm always turn a discard into a landing. That's it, you know? Whoever comes out, discard, tell us all.
So thanks.
What Patrick, I decided, what Patrick is saying, you know, if you open it up, just put it at seventy-two people, the people who are already involved in it, uh, stay involved in it, just add participants that are willing to follow and provide to do the massive progress. And I would even worry about gear type. I didn't do a pick up on that. I said, it's going to be kind of hard and and some of it may want to explore the option of opening up to a license thing a little bit, because it's still one year, isn't it?
Or?
Uh, for eligibility, it's going to, you have to have your multiple breakfast or?
One year, it's going to be one year.
One year history, yeah. So a gentleman who just got his license transferred to in January, he's going to participate. Again, because history doesn't transfer the title license, state or island, that whole tobacco that I love bringing up. I do not, I get a chance to. Because it's times like this. Who can relate? Nothing else. But it's really going to shaft people and they're not aware. You may want to consider that. So I know, I know for a fact, one of us has transferred to the father's before. You guys don't participate since you're, so he may be one of those people who want to participate on the sea bass and fluke. We have the aggregate program because he's sixty-five years old, but may not be as physical as fisher. But he may go fish pot and stuff like that. He wanted to participate. But due to the activities that we can't, there's a risk you can't get the questions. So if you don't open up the weird type, I would, we can possibly learn that too and say, well, great. We should adjust this too because well, we can't really say that, you know, this gentleman just got a license, but he can't participate. Because his license has forty years remaining behind it. Then the pilot can advertise.
Thanks.
Mike? I have just one more comment and it was brought up earlier too, but I actually did the numbers because I, I, I took that as a ten gallon a day thing for my mona gas that I use. And, and the numbers are being thrown out there. So there, there's going to be sixty participants in this program. Just imagine the amount of fuel that won't be applied to fisheries. If, if, if there's sixty participants a day or in, in, in a given week that won't be out there using fuel, the amount of fuel that will be saved from the resource is enormous, is enormous in, in, in the course of one week. It just, it just being able to fish two days, get your limit and, and if, if that's your choice and then go and do something else. So in that, in that regard, it even makes the aggregate, besides all the money or the bet, the, the better use of your time, the, the better use of our resource, our petroleum resources is, is, is to me is huge and is something that strongly should lead the, the whole fishing industry in that direction. No matter whether it's the, for fluke or sea bass or yellow tails or codfish or the, any of the fisheries, if we had an aggregate program for all those fisheries, imagine that, imagine how much fuel, how much diesel.
Imagine that. Imagine how much fuel, how much diesel and oil we could save in the course of a year, applying applying that that formula to all all the fisheries. It's uh it's staggering. In fact, I'm gonna go home and and actually figure out what how many gallons that is and all all you know, because you probably already know the the amount of participants that say like that are at point two. How many boats are actually fishing? How what what, you know, you could take the, you know, take the horsepower, you can take uh uh size of the boat, you can figure you can you can figure all that out and then apply the aggregate program to that to to the 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 to me, the the amount of savings is is enormous and and you know what, too, it it works in other parts of the world, other parts of this country. I mean, out the West Coast, those those boys are all they're all here key to aggregate. You know, they get they get their amount and then they go in and that's it. That's it. And they go do something else. They work at carpentry. They work at 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 another fishery. That's how they 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 build their life around it and it's it just makes makes this huge amount of sense. You know, my wife has been telling me that for she said, why 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 don't you just go out and get your limit and go home? And be done with it. That's the that's the way. There's no less waste, better better use of the resource, land on on a better day. It's just it's just huge. It's a it's a it's a huge direction. And these these fellows that are that, you know, they're just telling you, they're telling you right out how successful it is for them. And so it's for the state, for the for DDM, for fisheries, it's it it's a it's a strong recommendation to keep going in this direction. Focus on this and 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 apply the energy in in this and nurture it and and make it go and you have to you have so many positives and no negatives, no negatives, but maybe the initial positive. You know, the initial positive for the tracker, but other than that, it's 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 all win-win as far as this is.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, Dave Gordon has rejoined. See if we can get him on audio.
Yeah, am I on now? Okay, so I'll make this quick. I pretty much agree with almost all the comments that have been made. I fish out of Secana Point and I've been a part of the aggregate since the start. Uh, one of the key issues for me is the regulatory discards. Uh, and it with black sea bass in particular, almost thirty percent of the quota gets eliminated due to regulatory discards. And and this program is actually one of the ways to convert regulatory discards to to landings. You know, by simply giving fishermen a little bit more flexibility to to change their regulations. So I I totally support a continuation of the program uh as a as a pilot, because I think you need to evaluate a few new other aspects of it and also give time for the division to fish finish the the written evaluation it's doing. I in terms of the actual elements, I support seven days. I support adding new participants, let's say eighteen to the program. Uh, I support prioritizing past participants. If it becomes necessary due to high catch rates to cut back on the program, my preference would be to cut it from seven days to six days. Uh, and you know, basically, I think that and then and then evaluate what the consequences are. So I totally support a continuation of the program. Thank you.
Thanks.
Right, Adam Lottz?
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
We got you.
Okay, Adam Lottz, fish dealer, Lotso's Inc. We participated with, oh, I think it was about a half a dozen fishermen in the program. As a dealer, I think it it answers all the needs that we're facing economically, safety are two huge concerns. So we support the program and hope it continues in some form and we're with the DM and trying to figure out how. Thank you.
Thanks. That's it for Zoom. All right, I think we can move on to the last item. So the last item is a uh is a division proposal to the fluke exempt summer flounder exemption certificate program. This is just us planning ahead for what might happen with the aggregate program. Adding some language there in italics to allow an exemption from the certificate program if you are in an exempted program, so we could name a program accepted and waive this requirement. Any comments on this proposal? Does that? Sorry?
It makes sense. The way it's written out, we're not supposed to do what we do. So you kind of have the the exemption there, but instead of program, you put this in, just the program is exempted, so that it but it's, you know, two hundred pounds a day, you can go out and, you know, bring it. I said, I have a lot about that, but it makes sense. So put that in there so that it's not which is currently right now, the only participants in the program that can weigh over two hundred pounds technically
it to be held, you could still participate, you could only go to the table.
So again, the there's two ways to increase it, less time on the water, more people on the water. Again, I just run myself, my steering wheel, and my all really stupid, not gonna throw up. Just how it is. So you have like two licenses on, same way you do shellfish, finfish. Or if you do an aggregate, you fly like two hundred pounds per day and that's what the limit is, then what's the limit? You know, that's the point of dealing with what and everything else I would do, it's per person, so we're being penalized for being a member of the program. So I would say just make it the word integrity, you can keep doing what you're doing as a part of the aggregate. Future, it just continues.
Thanks. Patrick?
I uh I accept that as long as like the aggregate is gonna be an exemption program. And this is about putting two licenses on one boat. Because how uh so with two hundred pounds, that's not that's not right.
No, no, no.
Oh, you were just saying that.
To increase safety, the only way to increase safety is either A, another committee, another body of code.
I thought you meant two limits on one boat, because I was gonna say exemptions and that good. Yeah, I accept this. As long as it's pro pilot, we're really considered an exemption program. And I think it'll work.
Thanks.
Has that said, this is summer certificate for the summer period or winter period?
Uh, so so the so just to clarify, the the fluke cert is something that works all year round.
Right, right.
It just as as has been pointed out, is heavily used in the winter.
Correct.
So this is just and you know, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. If this does become a full-blown program, we see this as as a essential part of amending the red. Thanks. All right, so that's all the comments we have. For this one, we can go to the last slide. So first off, thanks. It's been a marathon. I appreciate everyone's patience. Uh, so yeah, so the public comment period is on February twenty-fifth. Uh, feel free to contact staff, make comments via email. You can email them to myself or Peter Duhamel. There's our email addresses right there. And so since there are no further comments to be presented at this time, on behalf of the Department of Highway Management, I would like to thank you for attending and for your comments and your patience. At this time, I declare this public hearing to be closed. Again, please be reminded that the public comment period will conclude at four P M on Friday, February twenty-fifth and that the division staff are available to discuss the proposed rule in order to assist you with understanding the the proposal. Thanks a lot for coming, guys. Appreciate it.